I'd like to call to order the committee meetings, Athens City Council. We're going to begin with the Planning and Development Committee, then we'll go on to additional committees.
So let's start with Debbie Phillips.
Good evening. It looks like we have a lot of things on the agenda, but I think we're going to whip through a couple of them really quickly. The Carroll Road Minor Lot Split, the property owner has again asked us to remove it from the agenda. He would like us to discuss it on December 11th so he can be better prepared for our questions. Although there were citizens who were planning to be here this evening, and I hope that next time we can actually have the discussion instead of having people have to change their plans at the last minute. The request to have a revocable license for the budget host sign, people wanted to have a discussion about that request. I'm willing to do that, but I know that Bojinka is one of the people who really wanted to have that discussion, and I know that there's now a rezoning request for that area, and I think it might be better to just wait and see what happens with that rezoning request because it may not end up being something we have to discuss.
I'm in favor of that.
I'm all, oh, I'm in favor of that. How long is that going to take, though?
It hasn't come to us from the Planning Commission yet, so it could be a while. But hold on to your packet of information.
Well, they have a hearing this week, right? On the rezoning?
Yeah.
Thursday?
So it could come to us fairly soon.
When's Bojinka coming back?
Next year.
January.
Next year.
Well, she should be interested in the other one, too, because it's her ward.
Okay.
What, the Carroll lot?
Two agenda items down.
Till January, right? You might as well put them off till January.
Well, because you think Bojinka needs to be here?
Right. And he canceled twice, so we can just say January.
I would rather not wait. I'll check and see if there are any time constraints for us as far as the Planning Commission recommendation. I just want to make sure that we don't run the clock out that we need to be paying attention to.
Well, if he's concerned about it, he'd get himself here, wouldn't he?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the third thing, Shady Lane, street maintenance. It's my understanding that there's a meeting tomorrow with the commissioners and people from the city and possibly somebody from township trustees to try to talk through all the jurisdiction kind of issues. I'm going to try to attend that, and this is on my calendar. I hope that's, I hope this is really happening. I'm not sure when it got set up. I know the mayor was working on setting this up, so I'm going to try to attend that and see if we can work out some of those questions. Is there somebody here that wants to speak to this? Okay. You come up to one of the microphones and...
You need to sit down there or come up here, your choice.
And tell folks your name and where you live.
My name is Jennifer Segal, and I live on Bay Lane.
Okay.
And I didn't know anything about the meeting tomorrow. So if I know, find out what time it is, I'd love to attend. We have been to many different people trying to resolve this, and the last time we spoke with the county commissioners, they sent us to the city. However, in the meantime, I pulled up the Athens County Regional Planning Commission provisions, and I think according to these provisions, they are clearly responsible for the fiasco. But I don't know. I guess I'll need to speak to a lawyer in the meantime. They said that because it had to be approved through the city planning commission, that it's the city's responsibility to fix this, and so that's why we kind of need to talk together instead of us being shunted from one group to the other, which is what has happened thus far. But in reading these provisions, under Article 106, it says, "No subdivisions plat shall be approved for recording until the requirements of these regulations have been met and certification thereof has been endorsed upon the plat by the appropriate reviewing authority." So when the property was sold by Sheostak &amp; Spezza to Stonehill LTD back in '96, the original road bond that was given by Sheostak &amp; Spezza expired as it rightfully should. They didn't develop it. The new purchaser, Stonehill LTD, then sat on the property for a few years. But then in 2001, and I have the deed history all printed out for this property, Stonehill bought it in a large parcel, and then they decided to subdivide it. And I have preliminary plans, pictures from when they first bulldozed, preliminary plats that they drew up. Now, they changed the original plat to what it is now, all of which had to be approved, and then it was subdivided into lots and recorded. Now, the fact that it was recorded without the county or the city or anyone requiring the bond or certifying that the roads were acceptable as they were, which is what is set out in these general provisions by the county planning commission, where it says right here, "No subdivision plat shall be approved for recording until the road has met its requirements." And it was recorded and sold, title searched. When I went to buy my house, we did the title search, and there was nothing that came up on the title saying that there was a problem or that the road hadn't been completed or that there was a bond missing. We didn't purchase our property until 2003. So even if, you know, because the Stonehill purchased it in '96, did not begin developing it until 2001, then sold the lots to Sean Jones, a builder, in 2002, I believe? Let me check my date on that. Even if it hadn't been earmarked, you know, saying, "Okay, these are now separate parcels," it should have come up before I purchased the property in 2003. So we wouldn't have ever closed on it, or we would have looked into it at that point. The only thing we did is we called, and we called the recorder's office, and, you know, we asked a few things, and we called, I believe it was the city at that time, it was not the county, and asked about the road, and they said, "Oh, don't worry about it. They collect a road bond when there's a new subdivision." And that's as far as our inquiries went. We believed them. And then after living there, we moved in in 2003, and after living there for a year and listening to the developer saying, "We'll do it next year," we waited. And then we called to find out when the road bond would kick in. And that was what originally prompted our contacting the city and county was to find out when that road bond would kick in. And after, I'm not sure exactly who did the digging to find the road bond, they said, "Oh, there isn't one." And so that was discovered in 2004, that there was no road bond. And we went to the township trustees, we went to the county commissioners. We came to a meeting of this body on February, I believe it's 16th. It was February 16th of 2005, and then Mr. Pearson said that he would write to Mr. Cassidy to try to pressure him into completing the road. My email, or the email from Steve Pearson read, "I just spoke with Mr. Cassidy. I believe him to be a responsible developer after our conversation. There have been some legal problems that have hampered his ability to fund the road completion. He believes them soon to be resolved. I explained the situation, told him a letter was coming, and he was completely agreeable. The county planner has the file at his home, so when he returns Tuesday, I'll get it and start working on the letter. As soon as it is drafted, I will have the commissioners either sign it or bless it for my signature. I think this will all be resolved to your satisfaction very soon." Well, that was in 2005, and now we are 18 months later, and still nothing has happened. So we're back. In April of this year, Stonehill LTD turned over the deed for the undeveloped portion of Stonehill's holdings to Citizens Bank in lieu of foreclosure. We did not find out about this until three weeks ago, although it happened in April. Now, Stonehill does not own any of the seven lots that are currently in what they call Phase One of the development. I own one. My neighbors who have been here or came to the city council meeting, the Halls own another, the Coronos own one, Mark Abdella owns another, and then Sean Jones owns the remaining three. Now, also according to the Athens County Regional Planning Commission, you can't have more than four properties using a road and call it private. Because our road was always intended to be a road, it was never intended to be a driveway. It is platted and recorded for seven separate lots and currently has four homes using the road for access to their homes. According to these provisions, that is a road and not a private drive, which I understand has been something that has been questioned before. And so this road needs to be treated as a road, and we know it fell through the cracks. We know it was a mistake. It was an oversight, and we're not here to point fingers. We just would like someone to admit some responsibility and to fix it, honestly.
I know that last week there was some discussion that we need to get together, a meeting with the commissioners and trustees. Mayor Abel, has that been set up? An opportunity to sit down and talk with the other jurisdictions to sort through some of the issues here?
My understanding, during the regular commissioners meeting tomorrow, that our law director was going to go over and meet with them, discuss it.
Okay.
What time is that meeting? I have to pick up my...
I think he said he was going to, this was over a week ago, and he's been on vacation, so I haven't been back with him. He said 10 o'clock.
Oh, in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
I can be there.
Great. That seems like the next logical step is to just talk with all the entities that are involved and kind of figure out how to proceed from here to deal with the situation.
Okay. So when the county commissioners say it's the city's deal, will there be a representative from the city, from this body to refute that or to discuss it with him?
The law director will be representing the city there.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm planning to attend the meeting as well.
Okay. Okay, great.
Anybody else on council have questions or comments on this issue? Carol?
Just on the lane on the left-hand side where they started to build whatever, and it's just been abandoned.
It's driving you crazy.
Do you know what the status is of that?
I do. I do, actually.
And how to deal with things like this?
Well, right now, the paper did get a few things right, although they got a lot of things wrong. There is a lawsuit against Stonehill right now, and Sean Jones and Stonehill basically had a falling out. That foundation on the left was supposed to be townhouses. Sean Jones built them on Third Street, I think, because the developer took so long to get the foundations in. And so Sean Jones went ahead and built the townhouses, didn't tell the developer. The developer began putting in the foundations and then found out that there were no townhouses to put on the foundations. In the meantime, it's been a real problem because a lot of kids use it for graffiti, and my family goes down there and we paint it out every time, and I would rather it be bulldozed out.
And my point of bringing that up is it just seems that's part of the quagmire of the procedure of what happens when a development that's given a go-ahead just totally gets into a situation that's this complex. What are our recourses, not only outside three mile, within the three-mile limit, but in the city itself? You know, there are a lot of implications here, so I think we need to look very carefully at everything that has happened and continues to happen.
And there's some environmental issues, too. Stonehill hired Hawking College to begin developing Phase Two, which is the part, the lower portion where the foundations are up the hill on the left. That's Phase Two. They denuded the hillside, and yet they didn't put in any sort of runoff blockages. There has been so much erosion. After a bad rainstorm, we have a mudslide going down the hill. That creek that used to have a lot of fish in it gets so choked with mud that most of the fish are gone. There has actually been a mudslide covering that part of the road that was roughed in with a bulldozer, and there's just a lot of runoff problems. My husband's gone out with a shovel and tried to divert the water from running down our driveway into our garage, and...
So you're the house right across from that, uh-uh, the drive-up.
Yeah. So anytime you want to ask questions, I'd be happy to show you around. So there's been a lot of issues, but the environmental one's been a problem, too. Hunters go up there, and we post the hunting signs because we, I have six children, and they rate age ranges from eight months to 12, almost 13 years old. And my kids play, and I don't want people heading up there. High school kids go up there to drink. It's been, I mean, we've had to clean up beer bottles, well, you wouldn't even believe that, well, you would, you live in Athens. Yeah, we clean up a lot of junk that we shouldn't have to. And so, you know, I just wish that there, it had stayed just trees and that they had done some responsible developing with it. So anyhow. Any other questions for you?
So who owns Phase Two right now?
The bank. The bank. It's defaulted to the bank. Apparently, they're putting it up on auction. I don't know when.
With Stonehill, right, before, or Sean, who owned it before?
Stonehill owns the remainder. And there's a lot of acreage involved. I don't know if you can see the original plat. Our portion is just a very small part of what is overall. This is really hard to see perhaps, but this is Phase One. When you go up, this is the road right here. This is all the rest of it. There's a lot of area for development, and I just wish someone, a good developer, had started it instead of the one we got. But we didn't know when we bought the house. We didn't know. And really, there's no way to know that. So... Any other questions?
Stonehill?
Amy, did you have? Okay. Could you ask where Stonehill is, please? Do you know who Stonehill is?
Oh, yes. Tom Cassidy and David Young. They're Columbus developers. Apparently, they, I have their phone number, too, if you want it. Please call them. Let's see here. Tom Cassidy's number is 740-548-3677. He is the contact person that I spoke with. He's also the one who arranged for our road to be plowed every winter or salted. And now that the property has reverted to the bank, I don't know who's going to do that. David Young was the person who financed Stonehill LTD. I never spoke with him. His number is 614-218-2462. Any other questions?
Well, I'll plan to be there tomorrow, and I think Amy's interested in being there as well.
Okay, and it's at 10 o'clock. Where?
The county commissioners are in the courthouse annex, right next door.
Okay. And what room?
You go up to the top of the stairs and turn right.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go into the door next to the board elections door, straight up those stairs, the office is right there.
Okay, I'll be there. Thank you.
Nancy?
I was wondering if we might, at the next meeting, come up with more substantive long-term solutions, such as changing the code to not release the bond until such time as it's, as it's complete, as the roads are acceptable? And the second one being perhaps going to a city engineer to check the status of these. And that would be something, I asked the mayor about it last week. Those are both discussions we had after the meeting, and I'd like to discuss it in some future time, sooner rather than later, so we don't have another example of this.
Next thing on our agenda is we have a request to consider rezoning of part of Court Street from a B3 to a B2D. This is one that we have seen before. I'm going to pass a bunch of things out. First is a chart that was given to council previously that compares the major differences between a B2D and a B3. Second is the letter from Mr. Smeltzer, who's going to talk with us here this evening. And then you have a bunch of things from previous discussions about this issue. So you've got a packet with an old, with old committee agendas on top, and it has the previous recommendations, notes from the discussions, and maps. So you have all of these documents, and we're going to go ahead and start with asking Mike Smeltzer to talk with us briefly about his request, and then Steve is going to walk us through some of the history of this discussion. So let folks know who you are and where you live.
Good evening. I will do that. Mike Smeltzer, residence 1430 Coolville Ridge Road and the recent acquire of a building in this area that I'm requesting a rezoning at 18 West State Street. And I think more than anything, it's a formality to get this on the record that I would put that request formally to council to consider following and implementing the very comprehensive plan that they've requested. And I did not have any idea when I acquired this building that this has been presented to council on more than one occasion and recommended by the Planning Commission on more than one occasion. So questions, I guess, at this point for me, or?
Nancy? Could you tell me why, in acquiring this building, what your plans are? Why you think you need six stories, let's say, or some of the other things that are in that new zone?
Of course, Nancy, you're limited first by parking, so it would be very difficult to acquire parking if you were going to be commercial or residential to have six stories. So that would be, that would be a tough one to pull off. My purpose is to have my office in the first floor and go up one floor with some residential units as well, for a few reasons. Take the pressure off our neighborhoods, stopping the conversion of, of course, the more financially lucrative conversion to rental, and also just, you know, kind of give me the flexibility to make the most out of the building that I bought.
So you can do that when the current zone, you can do that in the current zone, right?
Cannot do that. Reason being, commercial space, commercial currently requires parking. In the event it's rezoned and consistent and aligned and united with the remainder of the downtown area, in that case, commercial space can then be used for residential. And so thusly, I would have the parking for, say, nine units or something along those lines.
So you're putting, you're proposing to put nine units in this building?
Nine bedrooms, I think, would be my, my thought. Up above.
So you'd use the parking that you presently have for that?
I would keep six spaces for my business and use the remaining spaces that I own on the same property to, for the purposes of those folks.
How many spaces are there right now?
14.
Sorry, that was me.
Oh, it's okay.
That's okay. Hop in. What's, so you need, you are only short one space with the current zoning?
No, no.
You said you had to keep six. You have 14. It's one.
Well, it's 14 or 15, and the space that I'm short on doesn't have anything to do with that. It has to do with the bottom floor is 5,500 square feet of commercial, and there needs to be spaces for that commercial space on the first floor.
And you said six spaces?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the precise...
Well, I mean, you said that a minute ago. I did.
I think what I heard is he would keep six spaces for the commercial, but it would currently require more than that.
Mm-hmm.
And you're just keeping, it's just office space?
Correct.
And typically, in the downtown area, office space would not require parking?
Correct.
You're not going to put in a garden bar, are you?
I'll let you rephrase it.
No, ma'am. I have no aspirations to be a bar owner. And park on the right of it? As has been done around there fairly recently? As of this morning?
Ah.
All right. So again, walk me through why you want us to go to this. I mean, the problem that I see is, as a third ward rep, we're talking about an area of the downtown area that has tremendous energy. It's perhaps the most energetic commercial district in the area, and I feel compelled to ask you why. What exactly makes B2D more attractive to you than B3? So far, I've heard, well, you may need the extra spaces, and yet our code says that if there are spaces within 2,500 feet, as we've seen in some other examples, it wasn't necessary to, I mean, you could link them. I know those spaces are used by many other, many other entities, probably. If the cars that were supposed to be there were stacked up, they'd be six tall, but, I mean, tell, tell me again, Lee, what, what makes the argument for, for you?
Well, I gotta, I gotta tell you, not to interrupt, but I don't think the argument is mine. I think the argument is implement the plan that we paid a quarter of a million dollars for that says very clearly, here is what the downtown area of Athens should be. And when I acquired the building, I kind of understood that, hey, if they've spent this kind of money on a plan, probably they're going to implement it. I mean, that would be, that would be the, that would be the logical, that would be the logical assumption, of course.
Well, you know, but the problem is the six stories for me.
I don't have any problem limiting the height on bulk, on bulk controls if the height wants to be limited. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever.
But if we rezone at all, then I think the problems will be exacerbated in that area. We've had utility problems in that area, and we have not, we have not adopted the plan as of yet, but...
I think utility problems are a separate issue. I think that AEP...
I mean, we, I mean, we've had, we've had our...
If AEP is not performing, then they need to be made to perform, and that's, I mean, if there's business to be had, they're going to put the lines in. I mean, I don't think there's any question about that.
We've tried.
I understand they were here for a resolution, and then they had a lot of people show up, and you didn't follow through on that, yeah?
No, no. We did. Oh, well, okay. Doesn't matter.
It didn't pass. I guess I should say, it didn't go through.
It did not pass the resolution.
Well, we didn't, yeah, it didn't go. We didn't read it.
But we met with them repeatedly afterwards.
Well, yeah, they came and addressed the problem.
One of the things that I was thinking about, it was something I read over the weekend when I was sorting through a lot of papers, was the idea that if there are, that one way to reduce conflict around development issues is to look at whether there are things that are allowed in the code that are really not acceptable in the community. And it seems to me that one of the biggest issues that has come up around this question when it's arisen before is that issue of going to seven and a half stories. And I wonder if, if the people on council don't think that's appropriate, if we think that's kind of out of scale with the rest of Athens, if we might want to talk to the Planning Commission about lowering that overall for the whole B2D area and, you know, not, not having that be the sticking point so much. If we, if that's really the issue, that we think that that's beyond the scale for our downtown, beyond the capacity of the infrastructure, then we should just say that it's not allowed.
Well, I think it's going to take a while to do that.
Right.
I think from the point of view of my ward, I mean, there's all, we, I've been to meetings, and there have been so many complaints about noise, and having taller buildings will just increase the noise bouncing around in that area, and I see that coming as, and the whole purpose is a business district, but we know that the most advantageous thing to do is to build residential, and to build residential theoretically that will park in the parking garage, which is a crock.
Jim?
Actually, I was going to make this thing suggest, reasons to, he should, he should work to change this code designation because in, in previous discussions we've had about changing this zone to B2D, the, the concern seemed to center around the height of the possible buildings. And so I don't see any problem with requesting the Planning Commission to make a recommendation regarding that for the entire B2D area, which there are spaces in the other blocks of Court and Union that it might be someday feasible to put up a seven-story building. So if we want to restrict that, then that would be a good, that would be a reasonable route to take. And I, what Nancy said about this being a very exciting, energetic part of the business community is exactly true, and therefore I think it makes sense to be included with the rest of the downtown and treated in similar fashion.
Well, then let's...
With, with that proviso.
Before we get too far into this, we did ask Steve to come here, and I'd like to ask him to give a little bit of an overview of, we've been through this a few times, and probably just a synopsis. Thank you.
I'll just come up here because I'm used to speaking from this position at the Board of Design Appeals. Feels a little more comfortable. At my office, I have the Planning Commission files, the historic files, for everything the Planning Commission's done over, over time. In 1988, when Mayor Hendrick was elected, the Planning Commission became very much more active than it had prior to that. And one of the things that the mayor and the service safety director, as members of the Planning Commission, in 1994, when I came to work for the city, was to recommend the city council a rezoning of four different sections in town, a four-part rezoning. was to recommend to city council a rezoning of four different sections in town, a four-part rezoning. They were based on the Planning Commission's nineteen ninety-one strategic plan that they had adopted that I believe council had not acknowledged or adopted. But it was the Planning Commission's strategic plan of nineteen ninety-one, which also recommended rezoning the third or north block of Court Street from B three to B two D. Council accepted and passed through two of the recommendations for rezoning areas. Two were not passed. One of the two that was not was that rezoning on the north end of Court Street. Looking through the record, Howard Stevens was Chair of Planning Development at the time. Planning Commish, excuse me, council had some, there was some discussion about building heights. Basically, the back and forth between council and the Planning Commission was the downtown area has a, you know, a height limitation and it would continue on, you know, with that area of town for that rezoning. There are only eight North Court, I think, is the tallest building, which may be five stories possibly. And the only other thing taller in the uptown area is Bromley Hall that was built by the university and exempt from any zoning regulation at the time of its construction. So there, you know, in the downtown, the current downtown area, there aren't very many tall buildings. Another problem and some of the discussion and minutes that I had provided to Ms. Phillips indicated that there were two property owners in particular in nineteen ninety-four. At the time of this first, the first recommendation that had some concern, one was Jack Stauffer. He owns Strawn Plumbing that was located right on Court Street at the time. The other was Kevin Goldsberry and his father at the BP gas station. Mr. Stauffer's concern was that a plumbing shop would be a grandfathered non-conforming use in a B two D. B three, it's a permitted use, B two D, it's not permitted. Plumbing shops are not permitted. So that was one big controversy. In the meantime, Mr. Stauffer has converted that former Strawn Plumbing area to a barber shop and residential use. And Strawn Plumbing moved on down Fern Alley in a building that's now vacant. The large freestanding sign that would not be permitted, freestanding signs aren't permitted in the B two D. And so there was some controversy about what would happen to the sign at the BP station. At the time, there was a sunset clause attached to non-conforming signs. And that sign would have come down. In the meantime, though, the regulations have been changed. And any sign erected after nineteen eighty-nine would be grandfathered. That was the major revision to the sign ordinance, so.
Before nineteen eighty-nine?
Before, any sign, excuse me, any sign erected before nineteen eighty-nine would not be grandfathered. Would have to come into compliance. Anything after nineteen eighty-nine would have to comply. But you lose your compliance or your grandfathering, excuse me, when you change the face of the sign out. So if BP would, you know, they've changed their logo on occasion. I know now Chase Bank owns my BP credit card. I just found out the other day. So, you know, they may change the logo. And at that point in time, that's when you lose your grandfathering. So a sign, that sign would then be refused. In the meantime, though, it can stay just the way it is. So that controversy essentially is not as great as it had been in the past. In nineteen ninety-four also, another thing that I saw the planning, I mean, excuse me, the council didn't particularly care about was a fifty-fifty mix of commercial parking, excuse me, commercial use and residential use. At the time, and a lot of this is indicated on the comparison chart that I provided, parking at the time for residential was only one point five per unit. If it was an efficiency apartment with one tenant, they needed one point five parking spaces. If there were five tenants, you needed one point five. There wasn't any change. Since then, the requirement has changed from one point five to one per occupant. So there's been a great increase in the parking requirement, which would somewhat have a limiting factor on the total number of people you could house in a building. Residential parking is not, parking garage is not allowed to be used for residential parking requirements, only for commercial in the downtown district. At the time, too, in nineteen ninety-five, or when the original presentation was made, commercial use could meet its parking at the parking garage, but only if that use was within five hundred feet of the parking garage. Revisions to the zoning code, I believe in oh-three, examined that and provided that benefit to all downtown B two D business uses. The only part of the downtown area that was greater than five hundred feet from the parking garage was the area around BW three, that corner over at Congress and Union. And there didn't seem to be any reason why those few would be prohibited. As a matter of fact, at the time, Barron's Men Shop wanted to put some parking, they put some parking in the back for some residential use, but still then had to meet their commercial parking requirement. So they actually had to get a variance for being greater than five hundred feet away from the parking garage for their commercial use. Like I said, since that time, any B two D commercial parking requirement is met by the garage. But in no case, not now and not back then, was any residential met by the parking garage. What I did, too, on this chart was I bold and highlighted things that have been changed between what the code was that was in effect in nineteen ninety-five and what's currently in effect. Another change is bars have to be at least one hundred feet from any R-zone. There was no restriction on proximity to residential zones in nineteen ninety-five. Also, in the meantime, there is a total prohibition on residential use on the ground floor of a property, which was not the case in ninety-five. The Planning Commission did recommend, I believe about three years ago, to council to rezon that area. As I recall, their recommendation essentially gave an allowance for the council to draw that map of that area, however they wished. I provided Ms. Phillips with a map of what was proposed in ninety-four and what was proposed by the Planning Commission most recently in the last three years. And essentially, it gives latitude for council to draw the B two D boundary line wherever they might want to. I believe the ninety-four plan included the area known as, you know, bus station is what I hear people call it, where Wilderness Outfitters is at and Magic Video. The map that you got most recently did not include that area. Both plans, though, however, did include the area in question that Mr. Smeltzer has purchased. Both proposals do include that area on West State.
And when this was discussed the last time, Mr. Stauffer was requesting that extend down Fern Alley as well. He came and spoke to council.
Right. There was some discussion, the most recent review, that that parking privilege allowed to B two D businesses for commercial parking be extended down that way. Mr. Stauffer had asked the zone be extended. What he did was he just, well, I think at the time, what he said was, if you look at the distance from the far north end of Court Street, say at Bronies, to the parking garage, that is a greater distance than what it is to my plumbing shop on Fern Alley. That was going to be his argument. But Planning Commission did not recommend that the B two D extend essentially clear out over to State Street.
We also have another business owner from that area here. I don't know if you wanna talk to us about this. If you have any comments, Leslie, I just, you're here, so I thought I'd ask. Okay. Well, then, I wanna open it up to discussion if people have questions for Steve or for Mr. Smeltzer. Paul?
The map from ninety-three there shows this augmented, this side would also still remain B three. Is that B three presently?
Right.
So how far does B three extend on Carpenter? Do you know of him?
It goes clear from the corporate limits on the east at the Stimson Avenue Bridge, all the way down what's called the Stimson Corridor.
Comes out to the.
It stops on the south side of West Carpenter at where the subtle bug shop is at. And on the north side, I believe, at the, what's that fraternal organization right there?
Masons?
The Masons. So if you go to the other side, there's, on the north side of West Carpenter, there's a house and then a church. I believe those are in the R three. And then there are two small houses and a large house on the corner of Congress that are in the R three. So it extends a few lots over west of Court Street on Carpenter.
Okay. And the major difference really is the height requirement looks like setbacks change, you're saying, and the bar restriction changes. If I'm reading your synopsis correctly.
Yeah, well, the setback requirements and coverage has not been changed from ninety-five to oh-six.
But the difference between the zones, but you.
Right. There is no, the front setback's the same, zero. Well, actually, there are no setbacks, no maximum coverage in the B two D zone. In the B three, you have to stay ten feet off the side property lines and ten feet away from your neighbor in the rear. But you can build right up to your property line at the street side.
I have a question. As far as the noise issues that neighbors in the north Congress area have been experiencing recently, the difference in this a hundred feet from any R-zone versus the two hundred feet from an R one or an R two, if this zone were changed, how much more potential is there for development of nightclubs and bars in that end of Court Street?
Well, actually, what it'll do is it will diminish that possibility. Actually, Bronies will become a legal non-conforming use because they're now located in the B three zoning district where you only have to be, you have to be at least two hundred feet away from an R one or an R two. In the case of the downtown district, you have to be at least a hundred feet away from any residential zone. So there's R three right next to Bronies or within one hundred feet. So Bronies, as an example, will become a legal non-conforming use. And probably so will Casa also. And anyone that serves liquor in that upper portion of Court Street, if they're closer than one hundred feet to any residential district, R one, R two, or R three, they'll become a legal non-conforming use and find themselves in the situation that Mr. Stauffer did about ten or eleven years ago.
He wants to expand, he's stuck.
Right. You're limited to fifty percent improvement to your use or your building if it contains a non-conforming use. And I think that was his, you know, his concern at the time also.
The closest R three zones would be Congress, right? And then the next street up from, basically, it's one line of lots from Carpenter, right? And where is, is College is R three?
Yeah, College Street's R three, most of Congress's R three. So the difference being that the limitation of two hundred feet away of a bar in the B three is any R one or R two zone. But when the ordinance was passed, it did not include R three. So you could have a, you could have a bar or a place of entertainment right next to an R three zone. The limit, it's a little tighter in the uptown area. And that's a recent change. I think that council passed that ordinance after the Elbow Room wanted to transfer their license as the varsity club to where Matthew's Insurance used to be, at eight North Court.
And Steve, has that ever been tested in the Department of Liquor Control? Because they preempt local ordinances. Has our, has our restriction in the downtown zone ever been?
Having recently attended a liquor control hearing for Bronies, I was called to give testimony about zoning requirements. The attorney for Bronies objected to the liquor control hearing officer, but said that he would allow the testimony, but wanted to reiterate to the hearing officer that zoning had no bearing on transfer of a liquor license. So they kinda live in separate worlds.
Right.
I think essentially what liquor control is saying is regulation is local. If you wanna be more restrictive about where liquor licenses can occur, you can do that locally. But as far as the state's concerned, they're not gonna regulate proximity to anything. I believe there are some limitations on notification to churches and schools when there's a request for a new license or a transfer. But obviously, the local regulations here in Athens are much more restrictive. There is no, there's no mention of or allusion to proximity to churches or schools. The only thing that Athens city code has is proximity to residential zones where there's prohibition.
So we haven't tested it yet in general, right?
No.
Bottom line?
I'm sure that there's case law on it, that local municipalities can, can have higher restrictions than those required by the State Department of Liquor Control.
I thought it was preemptive, as that guy said, you know. I was there, too.
No, as I recall, in reading, because I'm kind of in the midst of the transfer of the West End Tavern license now to East Carpenter Street, I've been looking at state law. And essentially, what it says is they don't care about zoning. They don't care about local regulation. They're not saying that they preempt it. They're just saying, when it comes to consideration for that, they're not going to, they're not gonna consider that.
But we have jurisdiction on that. We have.
Yes, I believe so. If not, every, every restriction about, say, bars and their proximity to schools or churches or residential zones would be null and void statewide.
Because. If I, if I might, back to the last point, I'm sorry. I just wanna say it again to make sure I'm hearing correctly. If the zoning is changed as I've asked or some sense of that, it's actually less, as we've all read in the paper, there's a lot of noise created evidently by a particular bar and the bar seems to be the concern. This change would actually constrict that or restrict that ability to put either additional bars or expanding new bars. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I suppose noise can be a function of any kind of activity, but probably more so when you have outdoor beer gardens. From that side of it, just so everyone knows, if you're not familiar with it, I'm sure most of you are, I cited Mr. Wharton into court for removing the parking up at Bronies where the beer garden was at. He pled no contest, was found guilty of the criminal charge of violating parking requirements of the zoning code.
Is that recently?
Right after the noise complaint started. There were complaints about noise, there were complaints about parking, and there were complaints about something else. As far as I know, I mean, I've run this out as far as I can. I cited Mr. Wharton into court, he's been found guilty. That's when he purchased some additional property. Deed restricted some parking. As a matter of fact, I had inquiry today about the parking that's there right now. There was a recent court case where Judge Grimm threw out Officer Randy Gray's ticketing of someone for parking on the sidewalk. He said, Judge Grimm said it was not marked properly in order to prohibit vehicular parking there. And so when it wasn't specifically designated as pedestrian, cars were allowed to park there. So that's why you see, kind of with impunity at the moment, parking across what would appear to be the sidewalk.
And that was the case this morning. And I know it's a sidebar issue, but can we, can we make that a sidewalk so people, that's a high pedestrian area.
There's been discussion at staff meetings about that and the direction to proceed. I actually responded to an email I got today from Aaron Leatherwood, who's, I believe, is an officer in the Athens Near North Neighborhood Association. I copied the service safety director, the police chief, and Officer Gray on that because we have had discussions about our inability to write tickets in that area. And it's a highly congested area. It was really a problem when construction was taking place, both for the residential use there and for the commercial use.
I've been on the phone many times, right?
So.
Well, then, could you tell me, are they allowed to park on the right of way without our permission? Because are they on the right of way or no? Like, the back end of that truck had to be on the right of way.
Yes, they are. There's parking on the right of way all over town.
But we didn't even have a license, did we?
No, they're parking, actually, the three spaces they're required to have are perpendicular, excuse me, parallel to the fence in the street.
Also, you couldn't restrict their entrance.
It'd just be like parallel parking on the street. The car should be parking parallel to the building and parallel to the street. But without any ability for the police department, based on the court decision to enforce blocking the sidewalk, they're just continuing to park the way they've always parked.
So we need yellow paint.
Let's get.
We need some.
The B two D and the B three.
No, but it's, it is.
Carol?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Smeltzer. At the offices, what kind of offices will those be?
Professional offices on the first floor.
So you would have clients coming in and out, I guess, is my question.
Indeed.
Yeah, okay. Then I have a question, just curious. On the last page, you've included some comments from the comprehensive plan. And I wondered why you included, "Street furniture should be strategically placed throughout to encourage people to linger and enjoy the historic setting. And whenever possible, sidewalk cafes and other outdoor entertainment venues should be encouraged and supported." I'm curious as to their relevance to your point.
You've got me at a disadvantage. I didn't bring that particular part of what I gave you. But it doesn't, I agree with you, it doesn't sound like it's relevant in my case, so.
Well, I hope not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll have a sidewalk. You're not running a sidewalk cafe or anything like that.
I think the one that she probably, he probably included is the permitted users' bullet there. High degree of mixed uses being. there, and a high degree of mixed uses being encouraged.
Well, I understand that. What, what is relevant, but why these two are stuck in the middle that aren't relevant seemed a little bizarre.
It may have been I copied and pasted more information than I needed. I apologize.
Dear, okay.
We'd like to mention one more thing that may be important to some people. The B-two-D has a restriction on, no freestanding signs permitted, but also projecting signs. I don't know if you've ever noticed that projecting signs above State Street in the B-three area are very large, they're allowed to be up to fifty square feet. And in the B-two-D or below State Street, they're only allowed to be eight square feet. They can't, eight-square-foot signs can only be three-and-a-half feet in any one dimension. They can be any dimension north of State Street. So that is another little change that will add some, I'm sure someone from out of town wonders what magic line they might have crossed on Court Street, where you have these very little tasteful projecting signs, and then all of a sudden, I remember when the Swindlefish was, was up there, they were the first ones that stretched the limit on a fifty-square-foot projecting sign. So a change in zone would also mean that any, any large projecting sign up in that area would have to conform when it was changed. It was grand, it would be grandfathered until they wanted to make some change to the sign.
Because the recommendation came with this question about the loc, the actual location of the lines, I wonder if we need to schedule a little walking field trip to take the map with us and walk around?
Yeah.
I don't have a time in mind particularly.
Before it gets cold.
Before council seems to work well. Maybe not. I guess I'm available.
Be dark.
Oh, it will be dark, yeah.
Right. I mean, I was thinking more like Saturday sometime or something.
Saturday.
Yeah. But maybe we can check calendars and email around and try to set that up rather than pick a time right now, because I don't have a calendar with me. What do people think about going ahead and doing, passing a resolution requesting that the planning commission reconsider the height limitations and the bulk controls?
In terms of what? Making variations to the...
To actually change that.
To where it wouldn't be six stories, or...
Right now, it's seventy-five feet or six stories.
That's what I'm saying, to where it would not be the six stories.
So it would be, maybe the language that's in B-three, forty-five feet, three-and-a-half stories.
So meshing some of the zones.
And then there'd be a couple of buildings that are taller than that now, that would just be existing.
And if they changed, then they'd have to be.
Yeah. It's like the liquor licenses.
Yeah.
Is that the height that people want to go to is consistent with B-three?
I believe it was in the comprehensive plan that we still have, maybe not as revised, I never checked, but I believe that what they said to reduce the, as I recall. I'll go check it right now, actually.
Steve?
You might want to look at the buildings that would become legal non-conforming uses in the current downtown zone. I mean, to see how many non, legal non-conforming use, uses related to height you might be creating. Because like I said, that, there's a limitation then on the improvement cost you can put into a building without going to the Board of Zone Appeals and asking to be able to do that.
Should that be part of our walking field trip, or maybe we could just ask Steve to count stories and give us a little synopsis?
I can do that if you tell me what your, if you're considering forty-five feet or three-and-a-half stories, I can give you a list of current B-two-D buildings that would become legal non-conforming uses.
Seems like it would be good information to have, and maybe we should look at three-and-a-half versus four-and-a-half, just to see if, if it would be fewer that would become non-conforming?
That extra...
Just to kind of have something to compare to.
I'm just thinking if you'd go four stories instead of three-and-a-half, you'd save a lot of people from becoming legal non-conforming uses. But I'll take an inventory and let you know.
This, in terms of B-two's, this is, where are the B-two's now? What's left in a way, in a way of B-two's? Steve, do you know?
There's only one B-two zone in town, and that is the middle section of Richland Avenue. The inner, the, the area around the interchange of Six-eighty-two and Richland Avenue is B-three, and the intersection around the South Y, what's known as the South Y, Palmero Road and Richland Avenue intersection is B-three. The majority of Richland Avenue is B-two.
Okay, so in theory, B-two would also, right now, B-two, regardless of D or not, also could have six stories on Richland, like you said.
No.
No? B-two-D is the only six-story zoning?
Right.
So really, we're modifying just the B-two-D?
Right. Yeah, wouldn't have any, the, the buildings cannot be as tall in the B-two zone. As a matter of fact, one of, there's only really two changes between B-two and B-two-D for very few. One's a limitation on signage, one is the ability to use the parking garage for commercial parking, one is the additional height that's permitted in the downtown district as compared to regular B-two zone on, on Richland Avenue. And the other, as I'd mentioned, is a recent change which talks about proximity to R-one and R-two zones. As a matter of fact, I think that was part of the discussion because Richland Avenue is kind of sandwiched in between residential zones, and part of the idea, I know with the planning commission, was, do you really want to have a bar or a place of entertainment, something having noise and going on later in the night right there? So most of the Richland Avenue corridor would not even permit a bar or a place of entertainment or a nightclub, just because of that restriction of, has to be greater than a hundred feet away. So there's really only, really only three differences. Building height, signage, and using the parking garage are the only differences.
Nancy just suggested that we do go ahead and take this walk before council on Monday.
Before council?
She said seven, but I'm not sure if that's going to give us enough time.
No.
Six-thirty?
I'll be out of town, but I promise I'll walk around.
So we're talking about six-thirty?
Yeah. So let's try that and ask Steve to do this little inventory. Mary Able, do you have any comments or perspectives you'd like to share with us on this?
I think he covered, covered it full detail.
Okay.
And so...
Anybody else in the, any other citizens here who wanted to talk to us about this? Okay.
If I might, one last thing. I just, I've not been through this process before. Is there a, a public hearing as there was with the landmark, does, I mean, do we need to schedule that kind of thing, or how does that come into all this? Or does it?
There would have, there would have to be a public hearing before we would adopt it, so I, I think we're going to have to have at least one more discussion about this before anything would come forward, and there's time in the three readings to, for a hearing to happen.
Super. Okay, just checking, I wasn't sure how that comes together or not, okay.
Actually, if we're talking about trying to change or modify the B-two-D, that has to go to the planning commission. I suspect they have to have a public hearing on that.
They recommended it to us.
They recommend that, that height change?
Oh, well, the height change is separate. If we ask for a height change, that's its own separate thing.
We could have seven, six stories.
Okay. So just, okay, the recommendation wouldn't, would just require...
Can you believe it, it might be less red tape? It's, it's going to be, I can't, I can't imagine, but maybe. Maybe it doesn't have to go back and then back again.
Well, no, but if we want to modify it...
We said six-thirty, Nancy.
Six-thirty.
Again, I have problems saying I'm going to turn it into a B-two-D if it's going to go to six stories, even for a short period of time. Of course, it's amazing how building permits just tumble into the code office and then tumble out and we're stuck with it. So therefore, I'd rather see the height requirement changed first, from my point of view. And that's just me. I'm perusing this packet I've gotten, I realize I made statements in ninety-four saying I was against it, so...
You're consistent.
I'm consistent.
Okay, Nancy wants us to wrap it up, so we've got, we've got next steps, and we'll keep working on it.
Thank you, council, very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. The revised natural hazard mitigation plan. We approved the natural hazard mitigation plan a year, two years ago, and it's been changed, and we have a two-page note here explaining the changes that have been made. It's a copy of a letter to Chad McGuinness. Does anybody have this? And I, I will ask Steve or Mary Able, whoever wants to, to talk us through what you're asking us to consider here.
Well, what happened after the council had approved the plan? It was submitted to ODNR for their review. They then came back, close to a year later, with comments, which then Bob Eichenberg, the county planner, and I went through these and made suggested changes to the plan, which was retyped and then resubmitted to them. But this is a summarizing letter of all of the changes that were made to it. And now they've come back and said they'll accept, not in writing, of course, but they've come back and said they would accept it, except it's now deficient and that it's not been approved by council. So now council has to change or approve these four pages with a clarification. And some of the things were as simple in there as saying, they want us to comment on how did each committee member contribute to the process? And we had to write a statement there saying who are the people were and how they helped us with the process. You know, describe the process for identifying hazards and list the source used to identify the hazards. So we put in footnote in Chapter Two, Section One, Paragraph Five, the primary source for identifying hazards was the National Weather Service's list of Athens County natural hazards, you know, et cetera. And so this was all, I don't think it changed, it didn't change any of the goals of the plan. It didn't change any of the work areas of the plan, but, you know, they asked questions like how are actions prioritized? And they described the strategy used to ensure continued compliance with, you know, the They wanted us to include a schedule of public participation opportunities and who is responsible, will be responsible for organizing events, who will maintain the website, et cetera. And so there was just a lot of what I call organizational detail that they decided they'd like to have in the plan. Anybody that's read through the four pages can see that there's not a whole lot there And we did add a couple new activities, like an objective six, was to create a subcommittee of the natural hazard planning committee to investigate projects that are eligible for mitigation funding. And right now, I haven't seen much of anything that's mitigation funding, but we'll have something in place, according to the plan, to deal with it if it comes up.
And I have a copy of the earlier version, and I think there was a copy of the revised one that was going to be left in council, and it may have made its way back to you.
It did.
So if, that could be left on the table, so if anybody isn't familiar with the overall plan, you can take some time to look at that. We'll bring this up for approval next week. And are you going to want us to suspend that? I don't know what kind of timeline you're on.
Well, I just, I don't know, suspension isn't necessarily necessary. I mean, it's the holiday time, and we don't have an emergency clause in this either. It's just an ordinance. Once it's passed, I will forward to ODNR, and hopefully they will then give their blessing and approve formerly the plan.
Okay.
We've been meeting now for about a year and a half, two years. David, you're on it. How long's it been?
Two years.
Yeah, about that.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody have anything? Last week, there was, there was a lot of buzz in the community around the proposed fill plan for the NCR project, and Steve did bring some information about floodplain regulations that I'll just pass out to folks. I don't know, we need to really have a discussion about it, but I did bring that, and I, I don't know if folks did want to mention this. I had actually heard that I, I thought folks were going to ask questions about this this evening.
Actually, I had called Mr. Pearson's office because I had received this proposal as other council members did, and my concern was the typewritten part up in the corner says, "Earthwork sequence. Number one, excavate onsite borrow pits and fill building pads. Number two, perform as-built survey. And number three, upon city approval, submit for, for a letter of map revision in the floodway to FEMA for certification." I was surprised that city approval wasn't, or some approval wasn't required before the excavation started. But Steve didn't, at that point, have an opinion on that.
I can clarify that.
Okay.
What you're referring to is a LOMAR-F, Letter of Map Revision Based on Fill.
Based on fill, I'm sorry.
And whenever the community official signs off on such an application, which is the form called a community acknowledgement form, you have to verify that the, any excavation or fill did not take place in the floodway. So there's no relationship to floodways. As a matter of fact, FEMA is trying to determine was a CLOMAR, Necessary Conditional Letter of Map Revision, to move the floodway line. So, Letter of Map Revision Based on Fill, right now, if you go to FEMA's website, there have been about fifteen of those approved in the city. It's a way to have your property removed from the flood hazard area after you fill it. The application, it's a very lengthy application. Like I said, it was just a one-page sign-off, community acknowledgement form. You can have the structure removed from the flood hazard mapping, or the lot, or both. The first one of these that I saw was Burger King. Like I say, since then, there've been about fifteen of these, the most recent being Bennigan's. The movie theater on East State Street did it not too long ago. Lowe's had their lot and building completely eliminated. But that's all, I have to verify as a community official that this activity's take, this application's for something in the flood fringe, the hundred-year flood fringe, and not in the floodway.
A couple of real stupid questions here. So they're going to dig dirt out of these areas? Does that make that, how does that change it? I mean, do they need excavation permits for this type of stuff, or?
Um...
Do they need bonds for this type of stuff?
I think most of the requirements go beyond and above the strict writing of the law because ordinance oh-one-twenty-oh-five, passed by council December twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, attached, let's see, eighteen conditions to development, including posting of a $200,000 bond, complying with the land development ordinance, not disturbing the elevation of the old railroad bed, not importing fill. There are several, well, like I say, there's eighteen conditions.
Isn't this going to disturb the railroad bed?
From the drawing, this is the first I've seen the drawing, it would appear to me that this would, at least for a temporary amount of time, if they didn't propose replacement of fill, it would compromise the existing height of the railroad bed. It looks like three of those borrow pits are right on the old railroad embankment.
And the current, they haven't made an application for fill with you, with, under this proposal?
Under this proposal, no. But I still have the same concerns as I did for the application that I got in the summertime, a mass fill plan that was submitted by EMHNT. That was the engineering organization that did their flood impact study that council required also. And the four things that I noticed, noted as items of refusal at that time were verification from where the, the fill material will be coming from, a $200,000 performance bond, verification from the Hocken Conservancy District that they're, they realize there may be impact on their stormwater utility easement, and verification of, at a minimum, right off the bat, an EPA NPDES permit, that's a stormwater sediment erosion control plan, for sites one acre or greater of development area. EPA recently reduced that from five acres of disturbance down to one acre of disturbance. So there's several very preliminary things that have to be put in place before a permit could even be issued. I've been closely in contact with Mr. Hunter the whole time this has been taking place because of all the pending litigation. So, you know, in... So, you know, in, in consultation with him, knowing if I had the ability or the authorization to issue a permit or not. As far as I understand it right now, the appeals court case does not include an injunction to stop work. So that's why some of this had proceeded, and NCR appears that, you know, they're ready to proceed even with, with the appeals court case pending.
So, let me just, I understand your answer there was, was in response to Paul's question, did they need an excavation permit or some?
Yeah, rather than call it, there's a, there's a section in the zoning code called excavation permit with no definition, but there's allusion to it that it has to do with development related to Title 25 flood hazard area development or Title 27 land development application, that section of the code. So what I do in these cases is I issue a special flood hazard area development permit that's contained in Title 25.
Okay.
It's the same thing, just called something a little different. But there is a permit that's required, and it does examine either excavation or importation of fill material.
And in this case, both?
Uh, there can't be any importation outside the special flood hazard area, I believe that was.
Right. I'm sorry, it's importation to that site, not, not into the flood.
What I additionally provided to you was sections of model flood regulations that provided by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Floodplain Management Division. Two in particular are higher standards, are one called compensatory storage, which essentially means you don't, you have to use the, the soil that you have on a site. You can't bring any in. They want you to essentially transfer around the soil that's there. And essentially, what they're proposing is compensatory storage, a higher standard the city doesn't have right now, but, you know, I believe that's essentially what it is that they're doing. They're not bringing any dirt in, they're not taking any out, so there's no impact.
That's essentially what was required in the condition?
Right.
Even though it's not an across-the-board standard?
I don't think so.
A larger area, not on the one site, but...
Yeah, right, larger area.
We're in the larger area.
Yeah.
No, this one.
I got two questions for him.
Go easy.
Okay, so the one that's right next to the street, on the plan, it's 58.8 feet from the building to the edge of Stimson Avenue, and it looks like if one inch equals 100 feet, that they're going pretty close to Stimson Avenue with that borrow pit. And that would mean it's in our, probably in our right-of-way, which after the railroad tracks is about 35 feet, or in our setback as well. And I think they're supposed to meet the setback, as I recall when we were sort of jousting through these things, that was one of the things that we had to meet, that they had to meet, the requirement that they not develop in the setback or the floodplain. But I could be corrected on that one, wouldn't be the first time. The other thing I wonder about is the potential impact of the borrow pits that are to the east of that toward the stormwater facility, and specifically if there would be an impact on our service lines. And also, in addition to that, would the two borrow pits on either side of the stormwater overflow have an impact? I think that's an engineering question. And a third question for me is, we got money, $30,000, to put kitty stuff up, and, you know, here we're going to excavate an area that might fill up with water, and, you know, what?
And they're going to fill it back up.
Well, eventually, I guess, but, you know, I mean, it's just that this is a, a place where, where children will be playing, and I just wonder about the advisability of such a, such a move at this point in time.
Water rings.
What?
They just have to wear water rings when they...
Water rings, well, I mean, it's just that the water table is very high on that site. I think they know it from their, from their discussion, from their work on that. So I wonder about the compatibility of the borrow pits, where the villas were going to be, and with our area of recreation where we were going to put tot lots in, you know, just right at the end of that area stuff.
Currently, whenever we have a development plan submitted to the city, we have a review process that the Service Safety Director has set up for all, all departments to review and comment on plans. We don't have a formal application on this one, so it's not gone through that process. There's the possibility, I suppose, we should add a line for comment review for city council, actually, because the comments or the observations you're making, I think, are appropriate, especially for impact on utilities, although I think the Water and Service Department would check that, just to give, you know, a little emphasis, a little more emphasis to the appropriate department who will be reviewing that, I think would be good.
I guess my comfort level would be much higher if we had had formalized plans when we got this, and we wouldn't be in this position, would we? Bottom line, okay. But that's, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, Leslie, are you here to give us an update on the farmers market?
Public market.
Public market, okay.
She didn't think to get on the agenda, huh?
No, it's miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous? Maybe, maybe my...
Okay, one of each, okay.
Well, I thought it might be time for an update in terms of where we are in the process of raising funding for the Public Market Pavilion and some of the estimates right now that we have for the actual construction of the facility. So I'm providing you with two handouts. The first one is a grant sources timeline, and it looks like this. And if you notice, the last two columns, the one column is what either has been applied for or is in the process of being applied for, probably within the next seven to 10 days. And then the final column is sort of the working assumptions. Right now, it looks like our part of the actual construction of the facility is going to be approximately $700,000. And this is for a facility that is approximately 10,000 square feet and will accommodate 50 stalls for indoor vending space for any market, whether it's the Athens Farmers Market or other markets that may emerge in terms of using this pavilion. The design of the facility is also flexible enough that we will probably be able to accommodate as many as 100 stalls. So at the peak of the season, for instance, when we look at the Athens Farmers Market, maybe in the months of July through October, we know that typically anywhere from 75 to 90, 10 by 10 stalls are in use. This design will be able to accommodate the wax and wane, so to speak, of the number of vendors. We've also been concerned in terms of the exponential growth of the market. So I think as we have more and more vendors throughout the season, we'll probably always have both indoor pavilion space occupied and some outdoor space. Many of the members of the Athens Farmers Market are still sort of attached to the market umbrellas and canopies, so I think there will be some self-selection in terms of having vending space outside of the pavilion. We are in the process right now of preparing a draft lease with the owners of the property, Southeastern Ohio Management Company, owners Tom Parfitt and Brent Hayes. Most of the state funders will require prevailing wage, so the bidding process was done based on prevailing wage. Most of the funders are also looking at a minimum of a 40-year lease. I've brought some designs, again, artist's rendering of the latest version of the pavilion too, so if folks want to look at that, at some point, we can pass that around as well.
See, it's on the screen right now.
Hold it up, and, oh, wonderful, the world of technology, isn't it marvelous? I put that together between six and seven. I think I walked out of Staples with the foam core at seven, or at six. So it's not real pretty, but it gives you a sense of what the space is going to look like. We had probably about 15 general contractors who went through the bidding process, and I think both timing, the sort of high-profile nature of this facility really was a plus in terms of getting some good bids in. It looks like right now that the bid will probably be able to go forward with, will be secure probably into December or January. Ideally, the property owners would love to see the construction begin sometime over the winter months, and most of the construction timeline can occur depending on what our weather conditions are like this weather. It's probably going to be about a four-month construction timeline. So I am basing my assumptions that ACENet needs to raise $700,000 or more for this project within, hopefully, the next couple of weeks to the next month. Many of this certainly has been applied for. Many of the funders that we have been working with are very interested in this project. I certainly don't want to count my chickens before they hatch, but I'm still feeling pretty confident that we will be able to raise this money and hopefully raise a little bit more money. I would like to have some additional funding socked away in terms of some of the other expenses with the lease and maybe even some cash reserves for the first two years of operation of the facility. So those are sort of my assumptions at this point. The mayor and I have been probably conversing weekly on this project, and we are hoping to secure anywhere from $300,000 to $250,000 in terms of the city's participation in the budget. Some of that funding will come from the revolving loan fund, and some funds will probably come from program income. We haven't quite determined how much that amount will be, but hopefully, within the next week or so, we'll know that.
Do we know the balance in the revolving loan fund?
As of the end of October, it was $225,000, but we have, I think, a pending application. The program income fund with what came in recently, I take the fund balance from last year, would be about $175,000. So some combination there, because we don't want to spend the revolving loan fund all the way down because part of it is to help the small businesses like this. But you have to really think about the program income, which comes from the rental of the houses through Metropolitan Housing at, on Blackburn Road and Central Avenue. And that's been building up since they, they opened, and I think we finished the Blackburn Road houses in '96 or '97. So we've just let it accumulate, but it's a potential use for that. We'd want to keep a little bit in case we had a major house repair or something, but it looks like it would probably be doable in that. And this would be one of those, since it's already under the city's control, it'd be like, it's not a competitive thing. It's, I want to use this money we've collected under CDVG guidelines and this CDVG eligible program, and it can be approved in a matter of a week or two. So that would jumpstart to a large extent, and I think Leslie needs to, we need to clarify that when we start talking about a 40-year lease, that lease would be with the city of Athens. And so that commitment, what we've had in the word, in ordinances to Athens Farmers Market for, I don't know, 40 years, or however long it's been.
It's 35.
35, okay. Give or take half a decade. Would continue in that way for a long time.
I just have a general question, and I apologize if this has already been addressed. What are going to be the hours of operation? Are they going to remain the same?
The Athens Farmers Market will continue to operate year-round on Saturday mornings. Right now, we operate from 10 to 1. There has been discussion that hours might change in the upcoming years, especially once we get one year under our belt in the pavilion. The Wednesday market may go to be, at some point, a year-round market. Right now, it typically starts in April and goes through sometimes the Wednesday before Christmas. I think with the pavilion, this is going to attract many more vendors who typically do not come out in the colder winter months. Probably in 2007, once we occupy the pavilion, the Athens Farmers Market will go to a third day, and then we're hoping that another emerging market may occur at the height of the season, maybe April through October. That probably will not be the Athens Farmers Market Association, but may be a combination of artisan, craft, food, farm vendors. One of the challenges right now for many of the food entrepreneurs that I work with and many of the younger farmers is that there is not available space for them on Saturday morning. So what we would like to see is more market days occur, so many of these newer businesses would be able to have a larger market share as well.
In earlier discussions, I think you talked about the possibility of, of this being available for, for other uses also, musical events in the evening, weddings, bar mitzvahs, things like, I don't know.
I think it has a multiple amount of uses. I think entertainment will definitely be one that it can be quite flexible for, and I think a lot of other types of food festivals too.
It will be available, that's what I wanted to point out.
Yes, it's going to be a public facility. I think most of the time, most of us talk about it in the context of the Athens Farmers Market, and one of the things that I've really tried to be clear about is that it is going to be a public market pavilion, and maybe market is even too restrictive in terms of our definition of its use.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
So in terms of, if there's a conflict of, of events, the farmers market would prevail, I assume?
I would assume the Athens Farmers Market absolutely must prevail. That is their expectation.
I was just thinking of the chili cook-off that overlaps.
Right. I, again, I think scheduling will be interesting in terms of how we can work that out, but I think we'll probably have to appoint a market commission, much like the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, to help figure some of this stuff out. But yes, I think the Athens Farmers Market is really the grandfather of our, all markets, not just in Athens County, but really in the state of Ohio, and I think we need to make sure that it is a secure Saturday morning space available to that market.
Okay, the next question is the other page you gave us. What about?
Well, the other page is the actual budget information we have at this point in time. To be able to receive the bids, we did combine both parts of the budget, so the actual construction to the facility and then the parking and landscaping upgrades and some of the other utility upgrades that will occur on the site. Some of that budget will be paid for by this project, and some of it will obviously be covered by the actual property owners as well. We are not going to fund the changes that they made to their parking lot, for instance.
Okay. So that's the owner's payment side on this one?
Yes.
Project budget on that side?
Yes. And we were all quite excited that the budget came in lower than the architect's assumption as to what the overall budget was going to be.
Okay.
So now, you know, the question is, how long can these numbers hold firm? We're hoping that the general contractor is going to remain comfortable with these numbers for another month or so, but at some point, we may need to rebid it if the timeline looks like it's going to change dramatically. The property owners are also very interested in moving forward on this, so even if not all the money is in hand, I think there can be some flexibility for the construction to begin. But I certainly will, I think, require that we have commitment letters from all the funders. One of the big pieces right now is just getting confirmation from the city and from the state of Ohio, and then I think we can apply some leverage to the Ford Foundation, which is actually one of the primary project funders when we did the feasibility study. But I can't really get them to sign on the dotted line in terms of their participation until I know what some of the other public money is in place. And then obviously, this is an exciting project that I think many individuals will be interested in donating funds to as well. So we will be doing a local capital campaign at some point.
And a question about the drawings, the sense that I've seen the renderings so far, this is in front of University Mall.
It's perpendicular to the mall, and really, when you look, I didn't bring the blueprints. I thought they were in my trunk, but they weren't. It really, in terms of the actual pavilion, goes pretty much from that main entrance on East State Street. There'll obviously be some space in terms of traffic flow, and then there will also be space at the top entrance of the mall, so that you'll be able to, if you wanted to drive through between the pavilion and the front, sort of front, main entrance of the mall, you'll be able to do that. One of the changes, and I'm sure if anyone's been out on East State Street, you'll notice that the mall has been painted. Some additional facade work will be occurring within the next month or so, and all of that is part of the integrated design with the pavilion. So there'll be more outdoor seating in front of the mall as well, and we're trying to make the space as flexible as possible in terms of seating. So the Market Cafe will still exist. A lot of people keep asking me about that, and if anything, there'll probably be more benches and a space that will be much more pedestrian-friendly and, I think, encourage folks of all generations to hang out a little bit longer at the mall. bit longer at the mall and the pavilion as well.
So design-wise, it would be a standalone away from the mall itself?
Yes, it is. It's not connected. The buildings, the two buildings will not be connected. But visually, there will be hopefully good connections and good flow.
Code Office does have a copy of the plans if anybody wishes to look at them. They've had them for a couple of weeks now. And we have done our internal review, making sure where sewer lines are, water lines in relationship to it. Each one of, I think, the fire chief has been there to look at them.
This chief, myself, water and sewer.
Right. It's been going through this staff review for any final comments from us. I think that where we are right now from a council perspective is to get this really started, I need an ordinance authorizing me to apply to CDVG for program, any city program income or revolving loan funds or other CDVG or any other grants that are possible. Because some of these funding sources that Leslie's talking about may want to make it directly to the city because the city would be the one holding the lease on the property. So it has to be kind of broad along the lines of anybody, anybody else that wants to donate in addition to these specific things that I can, you give me the power that when Leslie writes all these grants, I can start signing.
Sounds like quite a team.
Well, it's just, that's the practicality of that. We really need to go through that the next, the first three Mondays in November or in December so that we can get these out the door, we can start getting responses. And we know whether or not we're going to start construction early in the winter.
As far as the timeline in terms of not risking the bid changing or anything, would it be helpful for this to be suspended so you can, you know, make those inquiries of CDVG and try to get a response before the end of the year?
Sure.
Yes, everybody okay with working on an emergency clause and suspension so that this...
I think the only thing, if you have a limit in your minds, let's say of the 300,000, you know, let me know that. Or if you only want us to go to 250 or if you want to go more than 300 if I can find it.
Yes, I would be more than happy for us to go more.
Well, I mean, those are the decisions I can't make. I can say where I believe there's money within, that can be easily obtained and released through our current CDVG programs, but you're the ones that have to say this amount is okay with us.
Well, I think what's been proposed here looks very reasonable to me. It looks like a really appropriate use of the revolving loan fund in particular. It could be helping a lot of small businesses with this one application. So, I mean, based on what you're telling us about what's available in the funds, this seems like a reasonable place to start.
Yes, those two funds, I think, would be able to do the 300,000 level without any particular difference. Still have some money in the revolving loan fund and the program income for house repairs that they are necessary to do.
Yeah.
And I think that what we have to remember, many times we've used this revolving loan fund to partner with the state, like in the Damon's Loan. And then there were another one I've asked Jim to talk about later during his committee meeting where we're going to try to leverage dollars to get more state dollars to replenish that loan fund.
Could we have a suspension, a second reading, just in case there's people who need voices or time-wise, I mean? That would just put us to the second reading. I mean, I have no problem with it right off the top, except I can see that there's probably somebody out there who probably is thinking, you know, 300,000, whoa, you know, or something like that.
Well, that would be December 11th, I mean, as opposed to the 4th. I'd be more comfortable with a second reading.
Okay. But we'll go ahead and put an emergency clause on it.
Well, it would have to be a special on the 11th, right?
Well, yeah.
There will be.
Special session.
That would be great. Okay. So we'll put the mayor on what he needs that to say? Okay?
Okay. And I will be going to the tree commission meeting next week as well for them to look at the plans.
Great.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, I don't have anything else. Oh, Carol.
I just have a quick question. Not for Leslie. You're finished.
Thank you.
I just wondered what's happening with the comprehensive plan?
We'll do it next week.
Pardon?
We'll do it next time. I didn't get my meeting on the agenda.
But it is, okay. Just, I've been asked that and I thought I'd pass on the question. It seemed to be a little limbo-ish.
Talk to the law director. Okay, that's all I have for planning and development.
Okay, finance and personnel. We're going to start out with a short discussion of the 2007 budget. Then several of the issues we're going to talk about tonight have an impact on that budget, so we'll just keep that in mind. The mayor talked about some budget concerns at our last committee meeting and...
These are all for me.
Oh.
Thank you.
And he had just a couple statements about some increases that he felt were reasonable with some of the pay grades in our scale.
After last finance committee meeting, I went back and reviewed how many actual positions there are in range six and above and really found the bulk of those positions, 17 of them are in range seven. Range seven is fairly inclusive. It goes from the beginning, Assistant Service Safety Director, the planner, up to fire captains, police captains, Personnel Director, many of our program directors. And where we are having difficulty is twofold, but both at the beginning and the end. At the end of the pay range, right now, it's 58,900 or so, we are getting captains that are hitting that. And what happens is there becoming very little of a gap between lieutenants and captains. And this is something we'll probably have to revisit and may have to separate them out as a separate pay grade at some point. But I think a $2,000 increase like we did in one through five would be appropriate there at both ends because we're not getting a wealth of applications for either the planner or the Assistant Service Safety Director. When they read it begins at 42,000, that sounds like a very responsible job. At least 44 would be a little bit better because our policy has always been to put the beginning of that pay range in newspaper advertising rather than the flexibility council has allowed me to say, well, if they have experience in everything, you can go a certain percentage higher than that because then everybody expects, they get it. So you don't want to erode your negotiating position too much. So my recommendation would be that. In pay range six, just because of the placement of the employees, and there's only three, they're all still in the steps, they haven't even hit the midpoint yet. So a $2,000 change to that wouldn't really make any, any impact at all. And in pay grade nine, that person's at the midpoint, there's only one. And then in pay range eight, I think there are, under this proposal, six positions, three of them prosecutors who are below the max by enough that it isn't going to get impacted. Same thing with the Director of Water and Sewer Utility where it hits the other end is if our Police Chief and Fire Chief are both caught by this, they're at the max right now, but they're, they both got 33 or 34 years in. So that maybe is to be expected, but I'll leave that to your guidance as to whether or not you want to increase anything in pay range eight or not because it would affect the two people.
With regards to this increase for pay range seven, at the lower end, the entrance end, which would...
The high.
Both.
High and low.
Yeah, 2,000 at the beginning level.
Shift at 2,000.
Yeah. Which would be of help, we hope, in recruiting some of the new people that we're looking for. And at the higher end to allow some people, a good number of people who are topped out to realize a raise after a couple of years.
How many again do we have in pay range?
17 altogether.
17 and seven?
Three there.
Okay. And seven?
In seven, pay range seven.
In pay range seven.
So does that mean we won't do a 3% increase to the mayor for discretion if we do this increase?
I would still do that. Because all that happens is it raises the cap so I can give those people 3%. Right now, because of the cap placed on, I can't give them any. Even if you create the 3% pool, I have to stay within that range that you established. I can't go over that other than in the case of longevity and in the case of the chiefs, they both have longevity of 6%.
So if we're giving, aren't we increasing the endpoint $2,000? Isn't that a big increase?
Yes, but if 3% doesn't take them there, then they don't automatically get $2,000. It's just the, the range opens $2,000.
Okay.
And then...
So he's going to apportion, the mayor will apportion the money and that's just the cap? Okay.
Right.
Paul?
Paul, what is the range seven? You said 42 to, what's the top end?
58, 9, I think, or 58, 6, can't remember. But it would bank at $60,800 or $900.
Okay.
But that was the second part of that discussion. There was some wonderment about whether we wanted to make that, that pool number a 3% as it has been or a 4%. And the consensus seemed to be that council was looking at a 3%, maintaining that 3%. So that's, that's what the mayor has, is building in at this point unless there's a huge...
That works.
So in general, what we're doing is we're saying that over time, there's been increase in cost of living and so on, and that's part of the argument here, isn't it?
Certainly.
Yeah, because they do get, I mean, the whole thing, I think the whole old system was based on, you get to a certain point and then after that longevity is added to your salary. So, but we also are supposed to increase it for cost of living.
Cost of living is...
And that's what we're doing here, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, we haven't mentioned that before, but it seemed appropriate at this point to talk about.
Right. And, thank you. Some issues that will affect the next year's budget. Councilmember Bain has a proposal regarding parking fines, parking, parking fines, yes.
Yes.
Increase in fines.
We quickly handed you each a piece of paper that the mayor provided me last week at the end of council meeting. And I had asked him what we could do to get some more police on the streets specifically. I was hoping in the neighborhoods, I think I, in my inimitable style, called them spandex type of people on bicycles, but you know, it wouldn't have to be that. And so, you know, someone who's out there. Because, you know, for example, today I saw Ali Baba, the guy who runs NASA, who runs that buggy, and his, he talked about how, you know, he was just waving his arms around to me, talking about how much of his business was affected by first losing two generators. Today he lost a, over the weekend, he lost a propane tank. Not that the police would necessarily prevent that, but more patrols wouldn't hurt in some areas. And, you know, I thought, I said, oh, well, tonight we're going to talk about two more policemen. And that's what, where this is going. So, you know, at least one person out there is interested in this. So the idea was to find a way to fund this without necessarily cutting back or even sharpening up or anything else. And so the mayor brought this to me last week and if you, if you had the paid plus $5, and you can see we would raise roughly with a $5 increase in everything, and the biggies are of course, in Sinesworth prohibited with 40,700, and with colored curb, 24,000, 24-hour parking, 80,000. And then of course, expired meter, the great big one, 264,000. We would raise an additional 157,220 that would pay for two police positions if you're willing to go. And I did send you an email on Wednesday, I think as I was leaving town, to let you know that this is an active proposal. Now, the arguments would be, and I know, I've had my occasional parking ticket, but I, and I know how annoying it can be, but on the other hand, OU does charge by $10 minimum. And I think that people would argue, some people have argued, that we have had a migration of cars to take the higher tickets. I, I would like to think that the people who do this are that rational, but I'm not sure they are. But I'll go, I'll use that argument because I've heard it said and it sounded good to me, but because I like to do this and so on and so forth. And I think it's just time, $5 is a paltry amount. People, I know one of my former students had about a $5 apiece. I mean, he must have had $5, $700 worth of fines when he left town. He had a chartreuse Volvo, so he was a target at that point. I'm surprised, that was in the olden days before they had the computers, but every time I see him, I think of all of his fines. And, you know, $5 doesn't seem like much, $10, huh? It's a box of Natty Light or something like that. You've got to think about what the possibilities are here. So I would like to put this forward next time and increase the budget, I mean, increase the, have Jim in the personnel line and increase the officers line by two, police officers. Anybody, yeah, Carol? Amy, after her.
Several comments slash questions. I also believe that OU not only has the $10 rate, but on a second offense, it's 20. And I certainly think that we need to be in line with at least their base or we do get some level of migration to our spaces as opposed to their spaces. I'm a little curious as to why we don't have consistently high collections on all the kinds of infractions. Is that because the computers are not used for all of those or what's the reason for that? Why are some of them at 73% and others are at 96 and 100 and...
Oh, I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask Officer.
Well, the computers are used for all of them.
Oh, okay.
But I think part of that just gets back into the frequency of tickets. When you have three tickets and they've all paid, it's 100%, you know? When you have, like for example, parking within 10 feet of a fire hydrant, 68 tickets were issued, 60 have been paid now. And that's really just the rebuilding occurring. We also have a policy that if you receive, I think it's three tickets or so that have been unpaid, we have the ability to tack an additional $5 handling fee onto it, send to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and they put a hold on the next time you try to license your car. A lot of those have, you know, you don't know how long that's going to wait to kick in because we used to June 1, 2005, to May 31, 2006. Figuring at least five, six months have passed, they've gotten two, three notices, three notices. So we should expect this to be a fairly decent rate before you go to any final alternatives of, of trying to collect. And I, I was pleased at his 80, almost 83% rate when we used to be at 60.
Right. Oh, I agree with that. I just was curious.
But can it get better? Yes. Because the company, when they talked to us, said that over time, they felt they could get the rate up into the 90%, the 92% area.
The other point is that we don't do this every other day. The last raise was six years ago and so it seems appropriate that we go to the 10 instead of, you know, incrementally raising it a couple dollars here and a couple dollars there. And also the total, if we collected $314,440, that would more than pay for two police officers, would it not?
With all the benefits and overtime, it'd be right about on for beginning police officers. If we're experienced, it would not, but we're not, even if this gets implemented and you wait to 30 days before it, you know, comes into effect and we put it in, say, February 1 or so, we're actively recruiting police officers. There's been, I think, a deadline's passed now for the current file and the next step is the testing. But it's going to be six months before we get somebody at minimum and run the background checks. But we have zero in our current pool, so we're creating a new pool.
Right.
But this would then at least know that at least two of those slots for people that pass through everything would do it. Again, we would, you know, but we always have a pool because we don't know about when people retire.
Right.
If a disability occurs. So we have to have a pool of applicants.
Okay. Actually, where my question was coming from was that it, it also would be parking and parking fines would be a place to... parking and parking fines would be a place to be looking for transportation support when we need it. And that's why I was asking if this would make more money than would be needed.
Well, this is based also on the assumption that even with the higher rates, the incidence of occurrence will remain the same. That's hopefully a faulty solution, you know? Money is incentive, I mean, if you're going to get hit with ten dollar fines, or if you're parking on the, uh, it's just like the same thing that you just did on the handicapped from a hundred to a two fifty. I mean, you're right, your thought there is, let's don't issue forty-six handicap parking tickets next year. Let's, let's cut that down to twenty. And, and so, uh, but, so in some ways, you know, that, that same kind of logic hopefully will apply when a twenty dollar ticket goes to a thirty dollar ticket. And usually, what we do is it then increases, uh, if it's not paid within forty-eight hours, we don't do the second offense. It still is the same fine, except in the twenty-four hour parking area is already built into your codes.
My final point is that I, and I emailed this to Nancy in my response, is that after all, this is an infraction. Nobody has to have a parking ticket to get by week to week, month to month. And, and so, I, I, I don't feel bad at all about raising it.
Amy, you feel bad?
Amy feels bad. A little bit.
I don't know, I guess that's coming from the person who we just raised the handicap fine. My issue is on the forty-eight hour rule. I'm wondering then, if we do raise it to ten dollars...
We're raising five.
So the second, so if you don't pay within those forty-eight hours, it's going to be fifteen dollars. Is that right? So then on...
It's just five dollars on the base, right?
The twenty-four hour parking?
No, no, for the expired meter.
Expired meter?
It'll go ten.
If you don't pay it in forty-eight hours, it would go to, I think, fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
It's just paying.
Because right now is...
It's convenient, they're all hanging on the...
Unless you want to raise all of them.
What if you don't have the ten dollars?
Depends more how you write the orders.
Which happens a lot.
Well, I don't know what to say there.
I mean, if...
They don't have it.
Well, what does the university do but put a hold, and you can't re-enroll?
Yeah, you can't do anything. You can't, you can't check books out, you can't do anything.
Pretty mild in comparison.
You get, you get responsible.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm not completely disagreeing with the increase. I'm just very hesitant about it. But, I mean, if you, if this is what we're talking about, guaranteeing two more police officers, which obviously has been a problem, I mean, we've been hearing about this for, for however long I've been involved with council, you know, prior to being on council. So if this is going to solve that problem, well, then I'm, I'm in favor, I just want it to be reasonable.
Let me just interject. Carol, uh, our sheet here has two projections, two possibilities. Okay, and we're going with the first one. We're, we're going with a base fine and adding five dollars to it.
Right.
Which yields a hundred and fifty-some thousand. The three hundred and fourteen you were talking about would be if we added ten dollars to everybody's fine.
Or if you added ten dollars.
Yeah.
I thought that was at the radio.
We'll do that.
Six years later.
We'll do that when you need the transportation support.
Okay, got it.
Keep holding that thought.
I will hold that thought.
These are not currently all the same fee level. Like, for example, you've got it, the five dollar increase projected on the handicap one, which we just raised a lot more than five dollars, or we're about to. So, are there other, you're talking mainly, in this conversation, we're talking mainly about the expired meter. Which other infractions are already more than five dollars? The twenty-four hour parking is...
Twenty-four hour parking is the, uh...
Loading zone, isn't that your part?
Uh, fire hydrants are, uh, I mean, I can get you a list of, of all of, you know, what all the fines amounts are. You can, you, you can't really get it all just from division out here, because did people pay it within the twenty-four hours? It looked like, you know, a parked vehicle more than one foot from the curb is twenty dollars, because there were only three of them. Sixty dollars was due, and sixty dollars was paid, so which means they were all probably paid in forty-eight hours.
So if we didn't do the...
You run another Excel column, I mean, and I can do that, I can pretty well get close to what, what it was.
Don't do handicap, because we just raised it, that only takes out two hundred dollars. I mean, because it's only forty-six tickets.
Right.
So, I mean, on the basis of last year, so, I mean, it's, if that's a contentious issue for people.
Well, I don't think, I'm just wondering if it needs to, five dollars across the board...
Maybe too little. You talk about percentage shifts.
You use the differential that you had in place there, right? If that's...
I think that some of these, like, parking in the front yard, you know, and, and, I mean, we issued seventy-six of them, we have a lousy sixty-eight percent collection rate, but I think it's a twenty dollar fine.
And that's the one that caught my attention. That's the very one, because it's very upsetting to me when people park in their front yards. And, and some cases more than others. There are a couple I could point out to you where just literally, they're just parking right smack in the middle of the front yard, and that we have a lower collection rate on that, and, um, these people can't be being ticketed for parking in that front yard that's not too far from me, because they're there every day of the world. And they've torn up the yard.
It's difficult to enforce, nobody really enforces it. It's a hap-hazard enforcement.
Why is it difficult?
You'll have to ask Police and Code, I think they both cover it, but neither one seems to.
You have a yard, and you have a car. You'll put a ticket on it.
I, I don't understand why it's...
So could we have a sort of, just to bring this around to, to, because I think Jim has some more stuff, could we say five dollars on the ones that, I mean, go to ten dollars on the ones that are currently five dollars, and then go to ten dollars on those that are more, like parking in the yard, go to thirty? And, well, you shouldn't be parking in the front yard.
Well, what if you don't have enough parking?
Well, you know, it's one of those places where they're, they have a parking spot over there.
And that's exactly why we, I mean, it's the only way we can tighten up what we've said for years that we're after, getting rid of parking in the front yard and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need the bodies to enforce it.
I know, I'm going to rock some money.
Nancy, I misunderstand. I thought we were taking the, the base fine, whatever it was...
And adding five dollars.
And adding five bucks to it. Whether it was two hundred dollars for handicap, now it'd be two hundred and five dollars.
Captain Pyle and the mayor came up with that, it seemed good to me.
I just used a quick way to say...
Which yields us that extra money.
I think that's probably fine, except in an instance like the handicap, where the fee is so much more, and, and we just raised it, or we're in the middle of dropping it out, so...
So don't put that one in it, I mean...
It's only, you know, we're down to fifty-seven, twenty-one, forty.
We're going to have to look through the codes to find where all these are.
I'm passing this to Debbie right now.
That's going to be administration.
And then cross-check it with Police and Code.
Okay.
So does everybody want, is this introduced by everyone?
Because I call it all the time.
All members of council? All members of council?
Yeah.
Except Bojinka didn't like it.
Oh, okay.
Bojinka didn't like it, doesn't sound like Amy's into it.
Well, I, okay, well, I think, I think that Paul, I think that Paul brings up a very, yeah, people who are in the country. I think Paul brings up a very good point in terms of, you know, incremental increases for the fines. I mean, if you're just going to tack on five bucks across the board, I mean, just so we can, I mean, just so we're going to bring in two officers, we're just going to fine and then...
Let's, let's get us, let Debbie and I and Tom Pyle get you a list for next council's meeting. This is something that, since the officers aren't going to get hired probably until a while, we don't have to rush through this. It is midterm, so legislation can go past and get count, passed in January, and then you can see if, you know, to what's there.
Okay.
In that way, give it a little more reflection. I just, I think for the budget purposes, if I know it's in council's intent, and I see that they've increased the staffing levels, and we've included this money in the budget, at least for, say, six months in the first year, then I can proceed administratively to try to get additional police officers.
So, back to the bottom line here, is that the one fifty-seven would cover for two police officers and not much more.
It wouldn't quite cover two.
It would not quite cover two.
Right, because we start a police officer at about fifty, or thirty-six thousand dollars or so under the current contract. By the time you add in eighteen and a half percent for retirement, uh, twelve-five or so for health insurance, uh, you have to outfit them, all new, you know, uniforms and the whole bit. You, you aren't going to get, you're going to be eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars by the time the person's on the street. But I think their overall budget can stand that.
Okay, that's what I, I just wanted to know.
This is a way to make up the majority of it, and I'm hoping, you know, that, by guaranteeing that this is going to generate it, because maybe less people get fined, because they don't want, don't want to obey the law. And maybe we'll get more, because we have more officers out, I don't know.
And Shane Hartley is gone, and so we're only paying a portion of his salary, so that will cover the gap if there is one.
I'm not having any problem with this, I just, you know, just want to know that if there's extra money, um, in terms of, kind of paraphrase, I have no problem with the increase of five dollars across the board. I think what Debbie was talking about in one sense was the idea of having a, of a percentage that goes up, but...
Right.
Sounds good, need the case.
And part of that fall is we could run another projection, if you decide, okay, the twenty dollar tickets need to go up ten dollars, because it's been fifteen years since, say, since we raised them. And we get too many incidences of people parking where the no parking signs are, or a yellow curb is, or parking in a fire lane, or all of the different ones that are on this, this sheet.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so we're, we're going to, no legislation on this one next week, we'll talk about it again.
Debbie, but you will, when you introduce the staffing ordinance, have two additional officers?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Just want to make sure, I'm not comfortable with it being introduced by all members of council, as it is now.
What?
You asked if we are comfortable with it being introduced.
And you're not?
I'm not comfortable.
We're not introducing it right away.
Well, that's fine, but I want to make sure that I get that out there. Because you asked, and I'm saying no.
All right, that's fine. I'll take all the credit.
We have, we have another proposal from Carol, um, which would affect the staffing ordinance and, and some budgetary issues also. And we just sent little packets around, everybody should have three pages regarding a proposal for Arts West.
And I can explain a little of this. What I tried to do, actually, the letter was from the Municipal Arts Commission to the mayor recommending that the coordinator for Arts West be a full-time position. And if you look at how this is configured, kind of the bottom line is the basic increase to the budget would be twenty thousand dollars. And for that twenty thousand dollars, we could make the coordinator's position into a full-time position and take the, currently, we have two people that are on hourly wages that, that work there, reduce that to one, and put her at a slightly higher hourly rate for fewer hours. And so, the combination of those two is a little bit of a savings, and that's where it, it comes down to, that the difference is twenty thousand dollars. The other two pieces of paper are, just to try to give you an idea of, of what's happened there during the past year, and what the goals are for 'oh seven. It says projected, I would call it goals for 'oh seven. And on the first one, it's income, and the, the figures are August 'oh six. The reason they're August is because that's the last sheet that they've gotten from the auditor's office, so they couldn't give accurate statements beyond that. So then they included a column with estimated end-of-year revenue, um, which is the fourth column over. And then the, um, goals for 'oh seven is the final column. The second sheet is the expenditures for 'oh six, and it basically runs down, again, this is August year-to-date, so, um, the, the figures are not what they are at the end of the year. But as of August, the expenditures were forty thousand. Any questions that I might be able to help you with? The mayor has had this for a while, and, and Jim and I have gone over it. But certainly, we need your questions and concerns. Basically, it's a building that is running programming with a half-time coordinator, and, um, the intention was originally for that to eventually be full-time. And I certainly think that the facility is running pretty high in terms of what they can accomplish with the current configuration, and that's why that the goals for 'oh seven are, are fairly lofty. But they feel that with the full-time coordinator, that those are attainable. Yes, Debbie?
I have two quick questions on the budget page. What is S U B S C slash odd dev?
Subscriptions and audiovisual development?
Audiovisual development?
Something like that?
Audience development. And that's the big thing that they are looking at as a goal for the year, to work on some techniques, go after some grants in terms of, um, what it is, is building a loyal audience that comes frequently, like, if there's something going on at Mamaw, there's a certain expectation that a certain group of people will attend that. So that audience building is kind of a technique that they're looking at to build the, the success of the facility.
And then the other question, in the cover letter, you talk about one full-time person, and then, um, hourly, um, the support staff, one person at nine thousand rather than two at fifteen. Is, and then in the budget, you have the building supervisor listed as ten thousand five hundred. I just don't see how, how the budget relates to what you're saying in the cover page. Is that the part to...
That ten-five, you know what, that may be the accurate figure, the ten-five, instead of the nine thousand.
But that, that is the support staff person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they, um, somebody said to me that one of the sheets I had wasn't accurate, and I think that's, you just caught it.
Okay.
Nancy?
I was wondering if this, is the benefit line of, uh, correct? Because weren't we using interns? So were we paying four thousand eight hundred in benefits to an intern?
The mayor would have to answer.
Well, you're paying thirteen point six five in P E R S, and you're paying one point four five for Medicare, and you're paying three point five, is it, for workers' comp now? About that?
So then, shouldn't the benefits be much higher, because we're adding insurance? Or are we not adding insurance?
You'd add insurance, you'd have to, civil service employee would be about twelve five, twelve six, I think, is the current amount.
So that's, it seems like the benefits for the coordinator should be higher than the...
I think that it would be. I think what Carol's proposal is, and the Arts Commission's assuming, is that this would get the pay range of a recreation program specialist. I think I've always wanted to do the provision that since this is a civil service position, just like when you created the planners position, a full-time job description needs to be melted out. We need to then send that to the Personnel Director, who would go through the normal rating criteria, and we might find out this is a pay range higher or lower. Or right on, don't know, but I think we have to be fair, that when we do this, we have to know that if we're running a system that's based upon, uh, certain supervision, knowledge, you know, and responsibility that's there, it needs to go through that system and doesn't just get, oh, this sounds good. Let's have a logic behind it, I think it's the theory of, you know, do you want this position? I mean, I personally feel that, uh, the arts is no different than any of the other recreation programs that we run, in the respect that we're serving an audience of our people to a certain degree. We underwrite that through taxes, uh, in the Recreation Department. Pool's a big example of that. But I see no problem with that from a philosophical standpoint, as long as we keep within, you know, our overall range, and we continue to try to, you know, get decent money out of this, from the standpoint of, there is a charge for the arts, just as there is for swimming and all the other programs that we run, and it should be fair, uh, to everyone.
No question. My question was only about benefits, and it seemed like it was too low.
I think it's low, I think we're probably about...
Nancy, are you looking at the sixteen thousand?
I'm looking at the, um, at the two thousand and seven budget.
Right.
And with insurance, with insurance being twelve. And then if you have P E R S and all the others, so it's got to be more than...
So you think the fifteen-nine is too low?
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not a big problem for me.
Well, I'm just asking, because I'm curious. Oh, I'm just asking, because I'm curious. Because they, you know, I didn't put together these figures, the Arts West folks did. So that's why I'm asking, anything that's off.
Why two travel expenses, there's two lines of travel expenses?
There are, and if you are looking here, that there aren't for the 'oh seven.
Okay.
They combined it because that was just something that came from Kevin. There were two lines, and they were used for separate definitions of some sort. So in the projected, they just combined those.
So then the other question is a more general question that I have is, are we going to then, we have one point five FTE here, plus the support from, from cleaning, right? Is that the bottom line, one point five FTE, right? Okay, and the point five doesn't get benefits per se, right?
It doesn't get health insurance, it gets everything else. And doesn't get time off.
Okay, then the other, and then plus we subsidize that. Are we going to have a, then here's the general question. Are we going to have a similar proposal from the recreation budget for moving that internship position into a coordinator?
No, I think overall, in the Recreation Department and the Community Center, what you're going to see is probably a lessening of staff members, because with the new minimum wage of six eighty-five, I'm not going to be able to pay pool aids five fifteen an hour, basic swim instruction. We're going to have to up those, and so I think we're going to see some increases in our costs for recreation programming. We have to equate that into what we pay referees and everything else, because if it's a normal, we usually pay by the game. But, you know, does this take two hours? And it really should be more than what we're paying right now. We have to, we have a lot of work to do in that area between now and each one of those seasons, and looking at what some of the fee structures are. Because I think that for some of the skilled positions and people that are with us, yes, six eighty-five is less than what we're paying some of the folks. But there's a significant number, more in recreation than any other one department, and the Community Center, that, that we have people below six eighty-five.
Carol, I have a question on one of the line items on professional, is this professional services? What kind of professional services are, fall under that area? With the projected eleven thousand?
Nancy has an answer?
I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Professional services, of course, can be a lot of things that varies by department. But for recreation, anytime they hire someone to teach a class, their contract falls under professional services.
So that is good, so. It is never an expense over and above what they take in by the very nature of the programs. Because they will pay a teacher pro-rated according to their class, the, the people that sign up and so on. So that would never go in the whole.
It, it depends upon, if you make a management decision to say, well, we want to try to start this even though we won't break even, with ten students, say, and our break-even point's twelve or thirteen, but it's the first time we've ever tried it, you might want to say, okay, I'll run it at a loss the first time. But you have to have a point that you don't cut it out.
Jim was sitting here saying, don't say that.
Never say never.
Never say never.
Debbie.
That makes sense.
Okay. My other question is about the statement here that the Arts, Arts West needs a separate budget. Are you talking about moving it out of Rec?
Right. It's actually mostly in the Community Center right now.
This would be moving it into Rec.
Yes.
From the Community Center.
Okay.
And the reason I wanted to do that was that the Community Center isn't supported by general income tax funds. Any deficit is covered by the special funds that were voted for the Community Center. The original theory, you know, thought had been, well, this is just like being in the Community Center when we didn't build a performing arts. But as I look at it more and more, I think, no, I think it should be in the general recreation rather than, you know, where it is. Because it does get a little bit confusing to keep all those tags on there for the gas bills. Because they are two facilities. And we still want to use the eighty-eight object code so that we can identify in that manner. But I just think it would work better in general recreation than it would in the specifics of the Community Center.
It does give them a bit more administrative autonomy, and would be cleaner in terms of accounting.
So these line numbers are where it is now?
Two seventy-one, Community Center operations.
Right.
Okay.
I want to switch it to two seventy.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or concerns with that? Again, it would be changing the staffing levels and increasing some, some personnel costs. But hopefully, the continued success of the Arts West program would cover that. A few general issues. Let's see, the mayor, for, for the clerks' information, the mayor would like to have a, an ordinance for early in December, that we have annually, several departments are going to be needing, they have enough money, but it needs to be moved from one line to another. And we need kind of a, I want to say, a appropriation ordinance.
Reconciliation.
A reconciliation.
That's what they do at Congress, they reconcile the budget.
But that's going to happen at the end of the year. Where there's too much money in, in supplies and not enough money in personnel, or vice versa, or something. We just need to move some around so, so departments come out even at the end of the year. And another thing I was going to ask the mayor to talk about. Most recently, we have designated estate tax revenues into a separate capital line item that was accumulating money to purchase a new fire pumper truck. We accumulated over four hundred thousand dollars in that. We have expended that money. The truck is ordered, the truck is paid for, we got a discount for early payment. Sometime in early two thousand and seven, we'll have a bright shiny, will it be red?
Of course.
Pumper truck.
It'll match the rest of the department.
The mayor is suggesting that we consider doing that again to accumulate the estate taxes toward a project that at the moment doesn't have an object, but it worked well with, with the pumper truck. Now that this does not have a, a goal, just, we're not going to be automatically dumping it into, he's suggesting we don't automatically dump it into the general fund. One of the possibilities he talked about is that city's entire phone system is outdated by a decade or more. We have some local people who are retired from the phone company who remember how to repair it, and that's, that's how we keep it going. That's going to be several hundred thousand dollars to upgrade that when that happens. We are also looking at maybe switching over to a wireless network for the computers. So there, there are already some issues that could use that money that we accumulate for a year or two. So although the fire truck has been purchased, we'd like to continue to restrict those, that estate tax for a cumulative goal for a project, which, if council members have something to suggest, is certainly welcome. One last item, traditionally, well, elected officials, mayors, auditors, council members, get salary increases only through ordinance. And traditionally, those annual increases have been at two percent per annum. That ordinance expires this, at the end of two thousand and six. If we want to continue that, we need to pass another ordinance before the filing date of people who would be running for office next year, which is, you know when that is, Debbie? February?
It'll be.
So early next year.
Wait, the filing deadline for candidacy, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes, it's sometime in February, because the primary's in May.
Yeah, so that's just saying that sometime in December, probably, we need to introduce an ordinance that would go through three readings, if that's what we want to do. That covers all elected officials except the treasurer, because the treasurer position is out of sync. And if you remember, last year, we just passed an ordinance to take care of, of that position. So, oh, Carol has something miscellaneous.
And I'm going to pass you another goodie. I did notice that last year, when we passed the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau contract, it is a three-year contract, but we only funded it for one year. And so we need to put through an ordinance. My suggestion is that we put through an ordinance for the, the remaining two years of the contract. One of the reasons we didn't do that was because we added the scope of services. We wanted to see how that went. And so I attached the scope of services that we initiated last year. I also personally feel that we should support this additional twelve thousand dollars that is used for tourism grants. Historically, council was awarding those grants and decided that there were too many, well, there were a lot of reasons to change that, and it took a great deal of time. And they felt that sometimes it became redundant, what the tourism was doing and what the city was doing. And so several years ago, we began allotting that twelve thousand dollars to tourism to add to their grant funds. So I also attached the 'oh six tourism grant applications and awards so that you can see the variety of activities that were funded through those grants. And I, this could wait till the eleventh, if you want some time to think about it. Or I, I know Nancy doesn't exactly agree with me on part of it.
Well, I just, what I want, would like to do, Carol, is separate out and do the annual, the twelve thousand annually. Because I think it just makes more sense without tying the hands of the next council. Because we have done that separately. I mean, I negotiated with Sally Dunker to do it, and it's come, and I enjoyed it, because she's a wonderful person. And I think they've done a good job, I have no problem with that. It seems that we have gotten things back for the Recreation Department, which is good. But I'd like to have the flexibility, I think, for the future, and to not tie us up, say, twelve thousand this year, and then do it again next.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we go ahead and do the thirty-five percent of the tourism fund? And then, and have that for, through 'oh eight? And then the twelve thousand just for this year?
I'd prefer it if I, if we could do it, just to.
Just to separate ordinance.
Yeah, just do it under two ordinance.
Yeah, and we can just go, I think we can go ahead and do it then, can't we?
Well, Paul?
I thought there was a cap on this, just not thirty-five percent.
There is.
What is the cap?
Oh, no.
There is on the chamber, but there's not on tourist.
Right.
Flat thirty-five percent?
So it's not on the, on the tourism bureau?
Because it's hotel motel tax, which they are directly involved.
I just forgot which one it was.
We hear with some more frequency from the chamber, we've been getting the, the staff reports and have occasional presentations before council. I specifically, because we keep talking about Halloween and having this come back and come back, it was placed in the scope of services for tourism and for the Chamber of Commerce, that they work with the citizen groups on trying to deal with this whole event. I'd like to hear some kind of sense of.
What they did.
What they did in terms of this.
They very much did. Paige personally was very involved in that. And if you follow the emails that Bill complained about, a third of them were Paige. And she was getting things on the website, she was facilitating projects, she attended every clean and safe Halloween meeting. She was very, very much involved with that process. And when, I, I actually talked to her on the phone today, because she had not seen this scope of services.
Wow.
You know, she's just been there a few months, and so she found it. And I, I said, this, you know, this is supposed to be part of your mission. And, I mean, she looked through it, and she had no problem with it. And she's commented on Halloween at that time, that it's not her favorite activity. But she certainly was willing to be involved and.
And very involved with it. I mean, she was very responsive to anything, getting things up on the webpage and sort of helping out with the Clean and Safe Committee.
And at the same time, she was just getting started in her own job. So I, I feel that, you know, she certainly came through on that. And that was one of the few additions to kind of what the previous scope was assumed to be. Because when I went through this with Sally, when we first were discussing it, and there, there were a few things that she took out that we had put in, and she explained why, and so on and so forth.
Because we haven't received the activity and financial reports even before, or at least council hasn't.
Well, that would be why, and I can.
Well, the annual report we've gotten, but there's a thing in here about monthly.
She does present those at the monthly board meetings, which I probably go to three-quarters of them. And she's certainly could forward those to council very easily. So I will suggest to her that she be doing that.
Thank you.
One last quick contract issue. Annually, we enter into a contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District to provide soil testing possibilities for citizens of the city, water testing if it became necessary for individuals. That's a twelve thousand dollar annual contract. It, it's, it is an annual from January first to December thirty-first. So we need to renew, we need to authorize the mayor to re-enter into that contract again. So, and that is.
Just to jump back to one question, question, capital improvements is only coming from the estate tax? That's all it comes from? Okay.
No.
No.
Not, not all capital, just, just a particular.
We have two percent of the income tax going into Capital Improvement Fund five eighty. When we did that, I asked, because we took that money from there and put it into the general fund. And it was my feeling that you never know what the inheritance tax is going to be. But that, you know, because some years it can be less than a hundred thousand, another year, like this year, I think it's two hundred and thirty-three thousand. We don't want that as a regular flow to pay for people. We want it to pay for capital items, but the state auditor's office has said to us, they don't like transfers from the general fund to the capital improvement. So I've been budgeting that under, well, this last case, under the Fire Department capital. I would probably do it under other admin or something like that. And then if we have a capital project that comes along, we do it. But at least we keep it out of the temptation, oh, look at that balance, we can go spend more for this or that. Because I really think, if we're only putting a hundred and twenty thousand away in capital improvements, we, we need the extra ability to do that, because there's, there's projects that come along that.
Okay, I just wondered what the flow was, okay.
Yeah, it's sporadic. If, if nice big growth in the income tax, I'd love to get back to the, ten years ago, it was eight percent. I'd love to get back to the, 10 years ago, it was 8%. Now, it's 2%. So, that's been a big difference to us. But that's how we've bailed out to not do layoffs in the general fund and in streets, or really primarily the general fund.
Okay, I guess I...
Negative year.
I guess I misremembered it. I thought we had zeroed it out on capital, that's why. I don't know why I thought that.
Well, we, I mean...
No, that's okay. I just was trying to figure out where it came from, all came from. Okay.
I have nothing, anything else for finance miscellaneous?
The only other thing that I had was I might, I look back through the revolving loan fund. I know that Gary Sealy's working with a company that would be a package deal, much like we did with Damon's, where we would have some local participation. And then, the state would also do part of the loan. And then, all the payback would come to us. He's not done with all of the detailed work on it. I feel that's probably going to happen prior to the end of the year. But you only meet through about, what, the 18th or something? Yeah, 18th. So, we might just give an authorization that I could do a CDBG application for revolving fund monies to do it. I've got the sample ordinance I gave to Jim that we did for Damon's back in, I don't know, it's been a few years. But we just have to change some words. And I'd have to get those from Gary and the developer I'm working with.
That was 1999.
Yeah.
How long ago?
1999. So, yes, I'm sorry. I fell to the bottom of my pile, so. So, we'll, the mayor will give us more information and we'll prepare something possibly for next week. That is it. Thank you.
Arts and Recreation. I'm going to start with just an announcement. Sorry, I won't forget. This is the poster for the arts, which one of you there? The Art Market this Thursday night. That is going to be at the same time as the tree lighting and the carriage rides uptown. And it's basically, I don't know if they'll be able to read that out there or not. But it says the...
It's getting there, getting close.
There we go. Hidden Treasures Neighborhood and the Athens Municipal Arts Commission presents Athens Holiday Art Showcase. So, that's from 4:30 to 8:30 this Thursday evening. And there'll be carriage rides along Court Street as part of the Chamber of Commerce activity with the tree lighting. And lots of the stores will be open and lots of activities going on. Should be quite festive. Supposed to rain, but that's okay. The art market part actually will be under a large tent. And so, we'll stay warm and dry.
Dry.
Well, we have a heater. We have a heater, we have lights, and we have all of that. And that part of it was sponsored by the Arts Commission. Moving to Halloween. What I've given each of you is a packet of information from the University of Wisconsin. And I've spent quite a bit of time talking with their... I would have to assume his position is similar to Ray Hazlitt's in Madison. But what I've done is I've gone through this packet and just made a few things to comment on and hope that you will take some time sooner rather than later to really go through this and begin to come up with questions that you have and send those questions to me so I can get on them, okay? So, we'll have answers. I also, Amy set up a conference call this afternoon with several members of Student Senate to just kind of talk about this a little bit and where it is. And they were very fearful that we were going to pass something while they were out of town. And I assured them no, that we were discussing things. I was bringing information to you, but there would be no action until they're back in Athens. So, on the first page, one of the things that I think is important to observe in all of this information is that Madison took this as an opportunity to rebuild the event, not just put up a fence and charge money, but to try to create an event that was more city-friendly. And actually, part of their goal was to get the money in to cover the event. So, if you look at page two, it talks about goals and success indicators. There, basically, some of this looks like it could have been written by us about Athens.
Except for the pepper spray part.
Except for the pepper spray. Enhanced public safety, alleviating costs and preventing excessive consumption of alcohol and use of other drugs. I think that especially down below in the rebranding of the event, exactly the things that Bajinka was talking about, having the marketing class work on and working with students to have an event that the students feel a part of, is exactly what this means. And for example, they worked with housing units, fraternities, and sororities adjacent to the area. And they got on board and helped to encourage students to, instead of having house parties, participate in the city's party, is kind of the way they worded it. Under number two, it explains they used a flexible construction fencing. It is not an expensive kind of fencing. And in my talks with Ray Hazlitt, he feels that we would have other uses for such fencing and that it would be a good investment anyway. One of the reasons for fencing is to keep possibly dangerous items and highly intoxicating individuals from entering the area. The admission system, they charged $5. Obviously, we could discuss that and how that, what rate we might decide on. Residents with, who live within the area, received their tickets free of charge. The tickets were sold in advance. Some local merchants sold tickets as well. All revenues netted through the admissions infrastructure will help offset law enforcement costs. Now, they did modify that a little to say that, to pay for itself, pay for the fencing itself and to offset law enforcement costs. Entertainment and food, I found this very similar to what we already have. They have vendors and they had two bandstands. They also encouraged additional activities within the fenced area, as long as that entity provided their own funds and owned extra security if needed, which is very much what we've talked about, including the heavy planning that was being attempted this year. That's under number four, sponsorship and organizations. They also talk about staging areas for the police. Something that they have been doing the last couple of years that I am not sure we have any interest in is they basically floodlight the area to what I would describe as the level of Peden Stadium. So, at dusk, they just brilliantly light the whole area. And so, they have a lit party instead of a party in quasi-darkness. Backdoor exits, I don't know how that might work in our city, but there might be some cases where that would be effective. What they're saying is that when the bar closes, that if they require bars with the capability to exit people through the back door instead of onto Court Street, that might be feasible, yes.
So, there, this implies that their party goes past bar closing time. Is that the case?
I believe their hours are just almost identical to ours.
Okay, okay. Backdoor exits, to my mind, the strategy's, okay. Okay, I could understand why you'd want, if you're closing the bar, rather than dump them out on Court Street.
Right.
You'd go the other way, but...
Well, and if that does, if that's the only scenario that it really would work, we could not use it. But it's just one of the ideas that they had.
How do they keep people from coming in the back doors in terms of ticketing?
How would we prevent that? Is that your question?
Yeah, in other words, goes from one, from the back door of the bar into Court Street.
Right. Obviously, we would have to work with the bars on that. Rules, zero tolerance of alcohol within the area, which is basically no open containers. Then, they have their body slamming and similar behaviors prohibited. We could write our own. Ours would have a little public disrobing clause perhaps in there. Yes. The expanded glass ban, a very interesting thing to me because I've talked to people for the last couple of years about having a no glass zone. And the distributors didn't want it because there are some imported brands that don't come in glass bottles. I mean, in plastic bottles. But they, Wisconsin felt this was a very important part of their plan. And the no glass area included a wider area than the fence. So, perhaps it would include like houses along High Street or Congress that if, that they're not to have glass there either. Those are possibilities.
Did they say anything about how they enforce that? Because that, I mean, I think the idea of not having the street covered with broken glass morning after is really attractive, yeah.
Right. I think it would be fairly easy to control inside the fenced area. The question is outside.
Yeah, if we're talking like Mill and Palmer, which is the area where they ended up throwing bottles at police officers and firefighters a few years back.
I certainly can ask. They also did have additional mobile teams of four to six officers in some of the assigned, or some of the neighborhood areas. I think the next little sheet you've got, yours are in a different order than mine. Your next one is a QO drawing? Okay, that's just the barricades. Then, the next page is actually some of the legislation that they put together. And it's very simple. The legislation just says authorizing donated funds and to utilize fencing in admission. It's pretty straightforward. And the whereas's, again, sound very similar to what ours would be. Then, where I went out of order, I skipped to the one that says Legislative File Number 04264, because it is an amendment of the one that you just looked at. So, I reversed the order of those. Then, the next one that you have is another legislative item, just how they work the financing. They appropriated to the police department and then put that these different things would go back into the police station or police department. There are some, they mentioned the improved lighting. And they also had increased sound equipment so they could make more general announcements. I think that our distance is a little shorter than theirs and that that can be handled here by the bandstands when necessary. The next page shows some costs. The fence and the barricades was about $3,000, if you look on here. And then, the other things that might be additional cost for us, $4,000 for a purchase and printing of tickets, $600 for hand stamps and pads. And then, it talks about the staffing for ticket sales. We could decide how that might be handled. But it does give you some idea of what costs they encountered. Then, the one that says agenda number is just to establish the glass-free zone. And then, has the map of the glass-free zone included. So, that's a lot to kind of go through and take a look at. I think the enforcement of the glass outside the fenced-in area is an interesting one. And another thing that we might consider doing is just try the glass-free zone within the fenced-in area initially. And then, if that works, try in a subsequent year to go beyond that. Debbie?
Just in reading it, after I asked the question, it says, "No person shall possess any glass container on city-owned property within the glass-free zone." So, I think that pretty much means like the street. And I'm not sure that that would address all of the...
Right.
The issues around how much glass might be out there.
Right. But within the fenced-in area, you can eliminate the glass altogether.
Do we have much uptown out on the street?
But then includes pop bottles.
Amy's trying to...
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, you're behind me.
It's okay, I know. Being on the safety team this past year, I think that walking up and down Court Street, I can't tell you how many broken bottles I picked up and threw them in the trash can, very many.
I think that's huge.
Mostly pop?
No.
I think...
Yeah. I don't think, sorry for that reaction, but I don't think I picked up a single pop bottle that night. So, I think that the glass is certainly good in terms of safety. But does that mean, what about the bars? Does that mean that they...
Well, then, they can have them in the...
Okay, and does that mean like, if we do do it outside the fenced-in area, then at their houses, they're allowed to have glass inside?
I would, I can ask that, too, if they, I mean, I don't know how you could restrict that. It would have to be outside.
Right, yeah. Can you really tell somebody that they can't have glass bottles in their house?
You can't enforce that.
Right.
You can't enforce any of this.
One of the things that they do, and I don't think that's in this packet, but they do have a period of time during which they say that vendors shouldn't be selling glass bottles. And that was one of the discussions I had had previously with one of our distributors. And I don't know if that would fly, but I can ask a bit more about that and the period of time that they restrict the selling of glass bottles.
Did they restrict it, or was it more of a, just a cooperative agreement?
It may have been. But I will definitely get more information about the glass.
The glass-free zone that's pictured, the map here, that's wider than the fenced-off area. Do you have actually a diagram of where the fenced-off area is on this, or approximately?
If it's not in your packet, I do have it.
Okay, I didn't see it. Maybe I just missed it.
I do have that map. I don't think it was in what he sent me by email. I already had that. I think I took it off of the website. And it shows the actual fenced-in area, so that's good.
I just was wondering what subset they're talking about, glass-free versus actually patrolled or fenced.
Amy?
Okay, maybe I'm, I think maybe I'm just confused. On the glass-free zone, which I'm in favor of, so that would just be enforcing no glass, however we decide whether it's within the fenced-in area or outside the fenced-in area. And that's, I mean, you're not allowed to have open containers anyway. So, this would, are you saying this would only really apply to pop bottles? I mean, because you're not supposed to have any open container anyway.
It sounds like you'd have actually, anybody would, okay. The problem with that is that somebody walks out of a bar with a bottle. Now, they've got an open container, so they should throw it away.
Right.
There goes the glass. If they have a pop bottle, they probably shouldn't have it either. So, now, they can toss those over their shoulder too to get it, so that they're not in violation. So, I don't know how you're going to keep them. We're back to enforcement at this point.
Are you referring to, like, if they came out of a bar?
Yeah.
To me, all of that, the back door, the people walking out with, they have bouncers. They have people at those doors. We need to really work with the bar owners in terms of helping us out. It's less of a policing thing and more of a cooperative thing. And I don't see any of this working if you don't work with the people within the area, with the students, trying to get them on board, that this is not an adversarial, you're bad students, we don't want you to have Halloween, da-da-da-da. But rather, a way to make the activity not so costly to the city, to assure their safety, to assure... activity not so costly to the city, to assure their safety, to assure, or to improve the assurance, I should say, of their safety and of the businesses' safety. But it's got to be a collaborative effort, similar to what I saw beginning to happen this year, and kind of the clock ran out. And so some of those things were in process. Part of what it does is it identifies a specific area. This is the area of impact. This is the area that we need to really work hard on. Could it impact the neighborhoods negatively? I asked that question, and I said, "Did it?", not "Could it?", obviously, it could. And they said that was one of their biggest worries, and that it just did not happen, that the neighborhoods were quieter as well.
Okay, they had less attendance in general, though?
They did.
They have roaming teams of police, which we strain to do outside the...
They're much bigger.
Yes.
Carol, I have two questions.
Yeah.
First question is about re-entry. I don't know if that was addressed in here at all in terms of...
Yes.
Handstands.
Handstands, okay. Because if we are talking about entry in the front door of the bar and then back, if you want to come back.
Right.
And my second question is, with this fencing and gating, will there be an increase in officers? Will we need to have an increase? Will there be a decrease? Will this help in terms of regulating some sort of security?
My feeling on that is that would have to come from the police.
What they feel?
I mean, this is something that Tom Pyle has been very anxious to see us support, and I think that he and the police chief would be very responsible in deciding what exactly the implications are in terms of our enforcement, and where it belongs, and how to implement it, and how to have contingency plans for all the what-ifs that could happen. Nancy?
I have a little bit of thought that came out of my reflection on last week's meeting. I don't want to carry on too long, because I know Amy still has at least a half hour to talk. But I'd like to see from the Clean and Safe Committee, I would like to see some notion of how much money they've collected and how it's dispersed. I think that, you know, we get bogged down very early with that, with the bread and circuses component of this, and I see that as an obstacle to going on to the next level. And, you know, quite frankly...
You mean in terms of other activities?
Right. I think that we all, we just get back to what their issues are, that small group that always was there as an entity. And I think that to go to your step, we're going to have to deal with that particular entity. And I think we need to know how much money, we actually provided one of the stages, and probably there isn't as much money in this as I would think, but I think there should be some accountability. It should be public, who contributed, and where did the money go?
Okay.
Unless it's a private corporation, in which case, why, we wouldn't be doing bandstands again. And, you know, I just think that we need to get that sharpened up.
Right. I would agree.
Yeah.
I think that perhaps the way we can view the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee as one of those entities that proposes additional things within the area and pays for it out of whatever they do.
Right. Just so they're collecting, I mean, if they're collecting money from the bars, I'd like to know. You know, and who's paying?
Actually, that was in the emails that were going back and forth.
I read some of them, but no...
The contributions, it was specific contributions, every single one were on that. So they're not trying to be, you know, obfuscated or anything, but they, I just think that we need to ask them to maybe join us and explain.
I don't remember seeing, I saw the list of sponsors, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Okay, not actually a dollar amount.
And the dollar amounts would be good, too.
Okay.
Because we're talking about public events and public expenditures, and if they're a private corporation, you know, maybe we need to forge a new relationship, or maybe they need to bid for it or something.
Right.
You know, because it's either Athens, or it is an Athens activity. And since we're taking a bigger charge of it, it seems, to me, that seems like the biggest obstacle.
At this point, they're going to be inside the fence. So either they pay, or they don't pay, and that's one of the questions as well.
And they pay taxes, too, on those dollars that are in town.
Assuming that they make money, and I think that's a huge assumption.
I have no idea.
I don't really either, but I will ask. Debbie?
I just would agree that it sounds like they would be one of the organizations sponsoring an activity.
Right.
And they would raise the money to do their stage, or stages. But it doesn't, because so much of the rest of the expenses of Halloween are borne by the city, that it seems like, you know, setting up a specific activity that another group can sponsor and organize seems fine. And I think that that's been part of the confusion, that people have said they're willing to contribute if they know it's going to help cover the cost of, you know, increased safety for citizens, but they don't necessarily want to contribute for music. And then there are other people who probably do want to contribute for the entertainment.
And I think that needs to be very clear when the committee is approaching people to ask for sponsorship, that that money is going for...
To sponsor a stage.
Just stages.
And there's accountability involved also.
Yeah.
As well as if we start talking about extra activities, suppose five more people went five more stages, how do we say, "Okay, you get to stage, you don't"?
I would have to assume that Ray would deal with that, and that it would be on a first-come, first-served and practical. There were some things this time that were brought up, like the big-time wrestling in one of the parking lots.
Secure parking.
That didn't happen. And so I trust his wisdom in handling that, and certainly, we're not going to have 47 stages in a three-block area.
But the placement of the stages was contentious.
I know.
And so, I mean, it's not like, and it's been contentious from the get-go. I don't want any part of it. But I think we have to recognize, the more there are, the more unhappy people will have.
Right.
That's it.
I think I'm finished. I have no...
All right, here's your hour meeting.
All right. It's going to take equally as long as everyone else.
So we'll be out at 11:30.
The only, yes, maybe, the only item on my agenda, just, I put Ms. Laney's on there tonight in case something did come up, and something did come up. Carol's going to give us a report, I believe.
It will be very brief. I just wanted to give you a slight update on the bus contracts. Two companies were invited to come to Athens and pitch their wares, so to speak, and this morning at 10 o'clock, McDonald Transportation was interviewed, and on Thursday morning at 10 o'clock, Laid Law Transit will be interviewed. And that's the long and the short of it. That's it.
Go Bobcats.
All right, we meet at by 10 o'clock. You can...